Six thirty. Thank you. Are we recording?
Yes, we're recording in your line.
Thank you very much. Good evening. This is the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for July 20, 2021. First full meeting alive, literally alive, in a year, over a year. Welcome, everyone. On our agenda tonight, we'll just go into it right now, please. And do we have anybody here who wants to provide public input on a non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands. I will move to item two, which I would request we table this item because the board minutes did not get completed in time for insertion in our packet. Is there any disapproval from the board?
We'll make a motion. We table approval of board minutes from July 6, 2021.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor? Five zero. Thank you. On the consent agenda tonight, we have three items, the first of which is a request to approve the Vittler enlarging license renewals for Bagel Cafe, Blaze, Uncle Willie's Candy Shop, and Zoot. In addition, we have requests for three road closure permits for following Bayview Street Art Walk, which will be August 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Central Street Block Party, which will be on Central between Cross and Trim between 4:30 and 9:00 p.m., and finally, Maple Street Block Party, which will be on the 21st of July from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. The last item on the consent agenda is the appointment of the interim MSAD 28 in Five-Town CSD School Board Director Rick Thackeray per the request of the Camden School Board. Are there any objections to the items on the consent agenda?
No.
Not hearing any. These items are hereby adopted. Onto item four, which are--
It looks like Colin's here. I wonder if he wants to talk about one of the art things.
Oh.
We're fast. You gotta be fast, Colin.
We already--
Sorry, you're already approved, but maybe he wants to talk about it.
Why don't you have him tell us about it?
Yeah, we'd still like to share about it.
All right, sure.
But Colin, you have-- take your time. You have to lead off with a song.
Yeah, you have a little song to dance.
But since you made the trip, if you would kindly--
I just brought it down on my bike. It was pretty easy roll, yeah.
Yeah, and get it in front of his tall body because he won't be able to hear.
Hard to find a place to park a bike. Actually, where'd you put your bike?
It's just really--
It's like, really, there's--
I'll have an update on that when it gets to my--
Okay, cool.
Oh, thank you. I was gonna try to--
Park my bike next time?
Grandstand a little bit.
So Colin, if you'd introduce yourself and what you'd like to just briefly tell the world about.
Sure. So I'm Colin Page. I live in Camden and I own Page Gallery on Bayview Street. So just before COVID, you guys approved putting banners up and helping promote the Camden Art Walk, which then was pretty much canceled for the whole summer with the rest of everything. So now that things are kind of opening up a little bit more, I went down to Rockland, saw Rockland's Art Walk, and they had it all open up on the street, and it felt like a good way to space things out. So as we are returning to doing openings in Camden, I wanted to close down Bayview Street, basically from Swan's Island Blankets down to the PG Willie Lot, because that sort of leaves access to all the places vehicles need to get to. And that's also where there's a new gallery, Topo Gallery, My Gallery, and Carver Hills right across the street. Leslie Curtis shows art in there. So it's sort of like Camden Falls in small wonder on the backside of that. So it's sort of like the core area of Camden where the galleries are. And closing on the street allows for the galleries to sort of spill out a little more and try to keep everyone from being congested inside. We did our first opening since COVID this past Thursday, like a very small one. We just told a couple people, and it still was more than-- it felt like more than I was prepared for. So it makes me know that like this, it would be really good to be able to spread out more for how many people showed up with just like, kind of mentioning it to a few collectors.
But two years ago, you had-- it wasn't a street closure, but it was an opening at the galleries on Bayview Street, which I stumbled into, and it was extremely busy.
Yes.
Wasn't it two years ago?
It was two years. Yeah, two. Our first summer, we did-- we tried to do Thursday nights to not compete with the rest of what's going on in town. So that's why Camden chose to do Third Thursdays for our art walks. So all the galleries are kind of in on that schedule, and everyone's pretty much ready to go with opening back up. And I've spoken with all the business owners along the block, and they're all excited and ready to do it. So I did want to make sure I wasn't gonna anger any of my neighbors before showing up.
Well, I think that's always a good idea.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
That's great. And it will be on August 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., roughly.
Five to seven, yeah.
It's been approved?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for organizing this.
So I actually did the first time, when I came in to do the, to get the banners approved that we were gonna hang in the street, Allison and Jenna and I think maybe Mark, three of you said, "When are you gonna close Bayview Street down?" And my immediate reaction was, "God, no. I've got enough to do." But now, here you go. So this is sort of a gift to you.
It's really great to see somebody actually, you know, people come up with ideas all the time of, you know, "It'd be great if the town would organize this or that," or "Paint in the streets," or all these things, but it's not that often--
Speaking of painting in the streets, the library has an event coming up where we are gonna have people painting all over the streets for the last weekend in July and an auction on August 1st. And that's gonna be, it's a fundraiser for the library, but there are gonna be 20 painters from all over New England painting in Camden that weekend on location.
Is that the plein air?
Yeah, the Camden on Canvas plein air event. Yeah.
Great.
So that's another, there will be people painting in the streets.
And then also--
They're not painting these streets.
Right. We need other people then to--
We're not actually painting--
Murals on the streets.
We might spill some paint, but-- Oh, yeah.
Like storm drain art could be your next assignment. Maybe we should just go big with your assignments for the year.
Yeah. I am surprised how easy it is to, like when I called Audra about shutting Bayview, she's, "Yeah, just fill out a form." I was like, "Whoa, that's way too easy."
We're looking for things to say yes to. I mean--
I have a suggestion. I was in Belfast recently and realized that they have painted the crosswalks.
I know.
Yeah.
There's a woman in Rockland, too. My mind just went blank.
Alexis?
Alexis Yamarino, who is really great. So if there are walls that need murals, I would love to get Alexis to help get some of that done. Is that something I'd have to talk to you guys about, or that's just a private building?
It depends.
If you're not putting it on our buildings, no. If you're putting on anybody else's building, you talk to the owner, of course.
It's good about your buildings.
There are a lot of places that we could put murals on. I mean--
You've got a perfect blank concrete wall for it.
Which one?
Nolton Street.
Oh, yeah, the parking lot.
Yeah. And the McCant, the Cameron House Pizza Wall?
That's a private building.
That's private, but that's the one I keep thinking.
There's a plan for that already. The design team has been working on that for a couple of years.
Just imagine if it's one that could be done with kids.
It would be so much better--
Gets kids involved.
To circumvent the current plan with a cooler one.
Alexis actually can get kids involved.
I should be careful to say, but there's, I bet you could come up with something cooler than what's--
Maybe. We'll see. I might talk her.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your support.
You're very welcome. I'm looking forward to being in there on August 19.
We are also, there's, I have a guy who might play some music outside.
Sure.
And I'm still trying to get a food truck, which we will apply for permit if we are in public property.
There's a, an agenda item coming up that will actually, you know, the signs on the lampposts.
Banners to hang in the lampposts, yeah.
So Janice created an applicant, unfortunately, it was after I spoke with you, Colin. She created an application because Lyman Morse asked for it for Camden Classics, but I feel like this applies to the art walk as well, and I wanted to mention that because they've asked during their event to have--
Is that the weekend bef-- that's like two or three weekends before Camden Classics Cup, I think, right?
Camden Classics is the 29th to the 31st of July.
Right. And so, yeah, so this will be a couple of weeks later. And if we, you'd mentioned to Kirsten at the gallery that you might want help, like labor, just to hang them. We're happy to do some of that, and the first who has already financially supported the art walk also said they have volunteers.
Great.
So we can help with that.
Great.
Because I think even just that week, it'd be really fantastic to put them up.
Thanks so much, Colin. Good to see you again, and have fun with it. No, you're welcome. In terms of the, talk about segue to the first item, which is basically we have to look at the approval of the assembly permit for Camden Classic Cups, Cup, actually, on July 29th to the 31st, and the related, as Audra, you mentioned, the approval of the temporary signs for downtown lampposts. The package for the signs is in our packet. Basically, the first half of that, though, is there are a number of events which they're planning, and since, as I understand it, since we have, well, more than 500 possible attendees, that's why it's here for approval. Correct?
Correct. Yep. So it's a, it's a pretty significant event in the town of Camden, and it's back, which is fantastic. So, yeah, it's like a whole weekend-long celebration.
So any just comments in the board, or do I have a motion to move forward with the approval?
I'll make-- Go ahead. Somebody else want to make a motion?
I want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
So are they gonna have fireworks and stuff as part of that?
I don't believe so because they need to put in a permit with the Fire Marshal's Office six months in advance, and there are no permits in with a fire marshal.
I was maybe at a recent meeting where it was mentioned that there might be-- Anyway, it would just be important to make sure that we have a plan for not setting Curtis Island on fire and all that stuff.
Right. Well, they have to notify us, too, by regulation.
It's gotten, I'm still unclear about that after all this.
Well, no, we set a policy to require them to--
We did, and the, and the fire chief, he regularly is checking in with the fire marshal, so--
But I got a funny feeling they skipped that this year, but I don't know that for a fact. Motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the assembly permit for classic cups on July 29th through the 31st, and approval of temporary signs for downtown lampposts.
Second.
Motion made in second and discussion. Not hearing any. All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Second item is a bid award for FY '21 paving. Audra, do you want to take us through that one?
Yes. So we did have an agreement with our paver that we had in, over the past summer, to just carry forward with the agreement that we had for the next two years, but the prices went up significantly. Sorry, I'm trying to find the bid award in the packet. So we, we went out and asked for quotes from the local pavers again to try and get a better price, and so Dave was able to find a much better price through Performance Paving.
Much better from what?
Allstate. Allstate was who we went with last year, and we had, you know, like I said, an agreement where we were gonna get the same price from them, and they sort of changed that, so we went back out.
Got it.
I have a question.
Sure.
The difference in price is not really dramatic, right? It's $29,000.
Yes.
10%.
Yeah. But is there a difference in the quality?
I mean, with these two companies, they both do a pretty good job. I mean, Allstate does a, they do a really good job, but I don't think it's like enough to--
To justify--
A $30,000 difference.
Okay. Quality of the pavement or quality of the-- Oh, also, Sophie, your microphone is not on.
Good point. Thank you. Yeah.
It is interesting, the difference in, when it breaks it down, the difference in the road milling and the road paving is considerable. It's twice as much, performance twice as much for the road milling and so much less for the road paving. Interesting to see the way they work.
Well, or the way they do, do not get good recycling prices for their milling. That's usually what drives that.
Okay.
I don't know that. I'm just saying, that for this case, but that's usually what drives that.
So the recommendation from Dave is that we--
Performance Paving.
Go for Performance Paving?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the paving bid for Performance Paving for a total of $367,737 for 2021.
Second.
Motion made in second and in discussion. All those in favor? Zero. Thank you. Let me just get back to my, one second. Okay, so the next item would be the approval of the, oh, my screen keeps reducing the size of this thing. One second. It's the approval of using PW Winter, Public Works, winter maintenance reserves for the repair of the trackless sidewalk plow. Again, Audra, you want to take us through this one?
Yes. So this is sort of a repair that's usually significant enough that we would try to budget for it. However, it sort of happened outside of the budget process when we found that, you know, the fuel pump and the four injectors had to be replaced. So we're asking that the repair be covered by the winter, winter maintenance, sorry, the winter maintenance reserve.
Okay. Just a general question. I see the total cost for repairs is less than $5,000. What is the, what will that leave in a winter maintenance reserve account? Which, which I believe is for sand and salt, right?
That's, well, not just sand and salt, but sort of any, anything to do with winter maintenance. You know, it could be overtime. It could be--
Do we know what the, what the amount is remaining?
We have about $91,000 in the--
Currently, so that we'd be taking about $5,000 out of that.
And I saw the repair's already been done.
Yes, it's mostly the accounting, so we're not taking it out of the operational budget.
Right.
Sidewalk side of work, I mean.
Yeah. Any other discussion before we go to motion? Motion?
Somebody else make a motion.
Somebody else make a motion.
We would move to authorize the use of the winter maintenance reserve to pay for the sidewalk plow repairs. I don't have the number right in front of me.
$4,0872.
I second.
Motion made in second. I believe the amount is $4,0872, as I recall, but it's less than $5,000, but the amount's in the packet. Motion made in second discussion. All's in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much. Onto the approval of the FY 2021 carryforwards to FY 22. And I think at the start, and this is the first time we've had our two new select board members, maybe a little description of what we are, that we do on an annual basis, actually, what a carryforward is and why we're doing it.
Certainly. So, and I think that you probably kind of implicitly understand, but just so anyone listening understands as well. So there are certain unspent balances at the end of the financial year for things that we're hoping to do in the, in the current financial year that we're in. Usually, they are related to a project, but it could be a piece of equipment. It could be that there's expenses related to staff, wages and benefits, you know, a whole variety of reasons why carrying forward funds from the financial year that we just closed out to this current financial year is beneficial for us. And given that we, we really kind of stand, given, we very conservatively budgeted for COVID, and we exceeded many of our revenue projections, and had a lot of funds that were under-expended at the end of the financial year, so we would be adding quite a significant amount to our unassigned fund balance. And so carrying this forward allows us to, you know, sort of do projects that we've planned. It gives us a little bit more flexibility in some of the other things that we're hoping to do, but, you know, maybe, maybe we would kind of hold off on doing them otherwise because of, you know, budgetary constraints. So what we're proposing to do is a combination of carrying forward certain lines into the FY 22 operational budget, but also carrying forward certain balances into reserve accounts, which is something that we haven't typically done a lot in the past, but we thought, given just the huge amount of money that would lapse into the unassigned fund balance and the health of the unassigned fund balance, that that would just give us more flexibility for, you know, being able to use that money to do projects or giving us a little bit of a buffer if some of our existing projects go over budget for any reason. So that's sort of the general overview of what's happening now. And just to give you an idea, even with all of these proposed carryforwards, we're still looking at adding about $700,000 to the unassigned fund balance.
From this?
From the end of the financial year.
Does that bring that fund balance, too?
I think it's like 4.7 million, close to that.
4.8.
So out of the 4.8, we're probably, you know, if we take our reserve balance, required reserve balance, we're probably looking at a couple of million dollars in excess reserve? If we look at the 4.8, and we, we have to look at the restricted reserve of 16, whatever you call it, 16.7%, that's probably giving us about almost $2 million. Roughly. Okay. I just want to be clear on that because that's the monies we use, for example, in our discussions during the budget last year, to draw from that to affect management of the mill rate, you know, so that we could not have to, additions, not have to fund it all through taxpayer. And that may be important this year because, from my perspective at least, because there's high probability we're gonna see a reassessment, a real estate reassessment in the town of Camden required by the state because our, their perceived or calculated total assessed value is substantially less than ours is at the moment. You know, it gets to a certain percentage, we must do a reassessment. If that occurs, we may have more reason to balance so that individuals aren't impacted dramatically. That's the reason why I mentioned that. But the biggest component of this is clearly, you know, the relatively small numbers except for the debt capital contingency account. That's where the 1.3-plus million dollars is, and, and those are the, but those are the projects we still have on the docket that just haven't been done yet. So let's make that clear. So the rest of it, the 1.5, is about $200,000 we're really dealing with, which is not a heck of a lot of money.
Now--
Yeah.
Go ahead, Allison.
So, yes, I mean, sometimes these carryforwards and unexpected balances are a good opportunity to also notice what, you know, isn't getting done and figure out why. Like the harbor float replacement, for example, is that because we haven't, we did replace some floats--
Some.
But we didn't pay for them yet, or are we--
Timing thing?
Because it seems to me that the need for harbor float replacement is pretty extreme and that, I don't know, if there's anything going on that's causing us to delay that, I think we should just go ahead and do it. I mean, some of them are downright dangerous, and I know town staff sometimes get applauded for, you know, spending as little as possible for as long as possible, but anyway.
Which are you referring to?
The harbor float replacement.
$19,000?
Yeah, I'm just, it's just kind of--
Well, we have a deadline on that one. What's 2023?
Well, some of the, I mean, that's because, that's to comply with our own ordinance with the polystyrene, but then there's other issues of, you know, to comply with just general things like when they're sinking. What?
This is for polystyrene.
Harbor float replacement, I mean, the floats need to be replaced for any number of reasons. We added the additional, most of the floats are in bad enough condition and there being, we're switching them out and sort of killing two birds with one stone, complying with the ordinance, and getting safer floats. But anyway, I just think we should go ahead. I don't, just a little confused about why there's money there right now.
Bob, I, so I agree with Allison, and I think in the presentation of the carryforward, what would be super useful is to understand the percentage we're talking about, because it's, although I did look at the budget and I know it pretty well, it's still very difficult for me to remember whether we're talking like 1% that is carrying forward or 15%. And if we have, you know, let's say, amounts that are above 5%, then they, they should trigger a review or why are we underspent, exactly the way Allison was saying. So just from a good budget management practice, I think just having a number in itself, if it, it doesn't help me if I don't know if it's 5 or 75%. Other than that, I have no, the only other comment I was gonna make is the contingency fund of $159,000. I think we voted the budget committee to put that because of the pandemic.
That's, that's--
That was--
No, that, the debate there was whether or not, whether or not they would approve additional $40,000 in the FY 22 budget because there was already a reserve of 150-something thousand dollars already there. That was the debate, and the budget committee did not approve the $40,000, but the select board did.
Okay. Okay.
And that was approved by the voters.
Okay.
That's all that's.
So that's. I mean, Sophie's, Sophie's right. We also at the time said the time to sort of litigate whether the select board has, you know, too much in the contingency or not. We do have to be able to justify that and there'll be a time when the select board will be carrying forward and that'll be, you know, an opportunity for people to come and say, you know, the select board has too much. I can think of a number of things right now that I, I believe that we may need that for. It doesn't seem like we have a huge group from the public that's like, tell us what you're going to use that contingency for, but if we wanted to go through that, I could say, well, you know, for one, the catch basin, we started catch basin cleaning right now and it looks like all of them need to be cleaned rather than just a quarter of them, things like that. There are a number of things that I think there's good likelihood we would need to use the contingency for, so there is good justification for carrying it forward, would be my.
We, we identified some of those, I believe this conference room was one of them.
The parking study.
In the parking study. We should, what we should do is, as matter of course, is have a running roster that we can continually revisit as part of our financial review every month so that we can track it and see where, otherwise if they don't track it, you don't know whether it's fat, dumb or happy.
And also focus on the underspends.
Oh, sure.
That they need to be.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Okay, with that, are there any other comments on?
Oh, and I've got one more thing with carryforwards. So the sidewalk project from Alden Street to, I forgot where we said it was going to stop exactly.
Matthew John? Are we talking about?
Yeah.
It's past there, isn't it?
The Washington Street?
Washington Street sidewalk from Alden to around Matthew John Ave. Given, I think, you know, some of the, you know, unforeseens, if we could carry over an additional 50,000 from the Public Works budget, I think, given that we're, you know, that, that means we'd add 650,000 to the unassigned fund balance and it would give us more flexibility for that sidewalk project.
Is there public works budget money to be, I think, I think we're already carrying forward everything that we can, right?
There's, that would be pretty much everything. That would be the balance of public works.
Would you, are you, what, what kind, where are you putting this in exactly?
So that would come out of, we call it, well, actually, we don't call it public works. We call it highway streets and bridges.
Okay, thank you.
That whole area.
Okay.
Oh.
There's an additional.
Right. No, well, well, here it's being suggested that it go to the reserves.
Yeah, that's what I would, that's what I'd propose that we do with it. We'd carry it forward into a reserve.
Okay.
Instead of letting it lapse into the fund balance.
Is this our?
Isn't that already on here, on what we're looking at?
No, that's, it would be an additional in, above what's on your spreadsheet in your packet.
Is 50,000 not related to our share of that project because the town has a?
So this is the one that we're doing, not, not the DOT one?
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
Hold on, I'm trying to see where there's, where can we see what the, okay, and the overall financials?
So I can give you that number. So we have unexpended in the highway streets and bridges, 242,022, and we're proposing to carry forward 187,917, but what I would ask is that if you just carry that whole balance.
Why was that so underspent? That doesn't make sense. It doesn't seem like it would be.
Well, there's, I mean, there's a combination of.
Highway streets and, I just want to make sure that we actually have money to.
In, in this spreadsheet, what you have is the 187 and you're proposing to go back to the amount we had before, which is 220 something?
242.
242, which is 50,000 more approximately.
Yes.
That's what you're saying. And what line item does this belong to?
So that is just the general highway streets and bridges. It's sort of the balance. It's the unexpended balance.
And it's?
And we would carry that forward into the, sorry, I'm pulling up the name of the reserve.
So that takes.
Streets, what is it called, streets sidewalks.
Would that take the total general, general fund, 1.5 rounding off, 1.524 million to 1.574 million? Plus change?
Yes.
Highway streets and bridges. What, did you say the, the number?
What's the account number?
It's a, it's a number of different account numbers.
Oh. But in, in the debt capital contingency account?
No.
No.
Where?
It's in the operational budget, the general fund budget.
Okay.
Do we, I guess I, are we able to do that because it's switching? I know we can carry, I mean, we can carry forward 10, up to 10% of the line item, right? But we can't switch it from?
That's switching it from one to another, so 10%, that would be switching like.
Oh, 10% can be switched from one to another, right, okay. And that's what you're proposing that we do?
I'm, I'm proposing that you take unexpended balance from the line items that comprise highway streets and bridges area cost center within the budget.
Highway streets and bridges, you mean like the entire public works budget or pretty what, more or less?
The number that's currently in the books is 200?
42,000.
2,000.
22.
And what they're suggesting is don't change it.
No, 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 what I, what I'm saying, no, sorry, what I'm saying is you take that total unexpended balance and it's all those line items and instead of letting it lapse into the unaside fund balance, you carry it forward into the streets and sidewalks reserve account.
242.
Yes.
I just wish I could find highway streets and bridges as a category in the bucket.
It's, it's just like public safety, you know, how there's public safety and it's like police, fire.
You see, public services.
That's it right there, that's, that's the main heading for all of this.
Okay, because we changed the name of it from highway streets and bridges, sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Is this because I said I wanted to get rid of the word highways?
No, you wanted to get rid of leisure, which we're working.
That too.
Highway and leisure.
Okay.
Okay, so are we allowed to do, that's the broad category? Like, we're allowed to take money that wasn't spent on wages, for instance, and use it for sidewalks as long as it falls under the broad category of public services?
Yeah.
Even if one's capital improvements and one's?
Well, I mean, one, okay, for example, so with this sideways, sidewalk project, part of it is going to be paying.
Oh, right.
It's going to be paying like overtime for staff to, that'll be part of the project.
That makes lots of sense.
So it's not, it's not like we're doing something contrary to what voters approved.
Okay, so.
Oh, right, yeah, that makes lots of sense.
We're just, instead of putting it in the unassigned fund balance, we're just.
Signing it.
Right.
Carrying forward.
Yeah.
So that you don't have to come back and say, we need more money from the unassigned fund balance.
Right.
So it, it can, because we have projects that can be, where we can spend that.
summary, Jody, what are we asking for, for exact numbers here?
Here, Jody, why don't you turn your microphone on?
I guess it's, I guess it's sort of pay me now or pay me later, we might as well put it in now and stuff.
Or we can.
Can use the contingency later. But, no, this is important, this is, I mean, and it's good because we're using, able to use our own staffing to do something that we might have.
Makes sense.
Otherwise ended up in the, yeah, I get it. I'm not opposed, just to be clear, I'm not opposed.
Oh, no, no, I could tell you're trying to figure out what I'm asking you to do.
Well, I, yeah, I like the.
That's a good way to, but it's tough to do a motion. But, Jody, you have the number yet? Take your time, dear.
$50,000 difference between.
That's why I know what the number is.
So, yeah, I've, I've made it for the, the entire 242.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, my computer is telling me I need to like.
Update it.
Repair it for some reason, so I'm sorry if it's a little slow.
Sure.
Okay, so for the general fund carryforwards, it's 1,706,425.
Okay, that's the number that is comparable to the 1,524,499 we have on our spreadsheet.
Right.
Okay.
And then you'll also continue to have the, the transfers on the second page that's got a heading of transfers to reserves. Those also, those have remained, they're, they're not changing. And that's the 304,558, and I just need to move some numbers around once I get.
Actually, it's on the third page because wastewater's the second page.
Wastewater is in the middle, yeah.
But again, the transfers to reserve, just summarize those for everybody's knowledge, These transfers are being made because, just explain to them.
Oh, instead of carrying, because a lot of the time it's like we carry line item to line item from, you know, prior financial year to current financial year. Because we have just, you know, so much money that would be going into the unassigned fund balance, we thought instead of the line item to line item, putting money into these reserve accounts where we have projects that we're currently trying to implement, it would be a better use of those funds.
Okay.
Which those reserves still do require board vote to spend out of those, so.
Of course.
Yeah.
Jody, I just want to correct something.
Okay.
So that 50,000 would be carried forward into the streets and sidewalks, so the total transfer to reserves would be 350, if that makes sense.
354.
354.
4, okay.
558.
Yeah.
Would be the number for the reserves.
Yes. Okay, um, yes, I can.
But then we're going to be. That to pay wages if necessary.
Yes.
354558 for transfer to reserves, okay.
Yeah.
Because those are the two numbers. Any other discussion or do I have a motion?
What's the final number again?
You can mark.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the FY 2021 carryforwards to FY 22 in the amount of 1,700.
706.
706425 dollars and 350, transfer 354,558,000.
To reserves.
To reserves.
Second.
Motion made in second, any more further discussion? Close in favor? Five zero. Thank you, Jody. Thank you, Audrey. Let me get back on my horse here.
Wastewater consent decree.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we have a request for approval of the supplemental environmental program for, through a wastewater consent decree.
So, I'm sorry, the wastewater carryforwards, will we prove them when?
Oh, did we skip right by that, didn't we?
We skipped that one, remember, right?
My bad.
Do we need to do that as wastewater commissioners?
That's what I was asking.
Why don't I amend?
No, because it's the.
No, it's okay, you did all right, that's correct. But, yeah, they should be as wastewater commissioners.
I'll make a motion that we approve the FY 21 to FY 22 carryforwards for wastewater for the total of 1,494,206.
Technically, we should convene as wastewater commissioners.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn as select board.
Next action item.
Okay. Select board and reconvene as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Close in favor? Pfizer, okay, wastewater commissioners, now let's just address the wastewater carryforwards.
I make a motion that we approve the FY 21 to FY 22 carryforwards for the wastewater department in the total of 1,494,206.
I will second for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
Discussion, let's have discussion.
Um.
Sophie's first this time.
So I have two, two questions. The first one always, so where are the carryforwards going? Because in this case, is it going to the operational budget or to a mix of reserves and operational budget? And again, I note that it's a significant amount that we're carrying forward.
Yes.
And I'm always concerned with the wastewater budget because it's a high budget, it's an underspend consistently year over year, and I, I'm not super comfortable with that, so.
Absolutely, so the, a lot of them are the maintenance accounts, so, you know, and that's just the sort of yearly annual maintenance, like with the collection system, plant repairs and maintenance, pump station. And I think really it's just sort of, you know, conservative budgeting if something happens in the course of the, you know, plant upgrade happening, wanting to have that sort of cash on hand, because this money would also lapse into the unassigned fund balance for the wastewater treatment plant, which is a little bit less difficult. As wastewater commissioners, you can decide to spend out of the unassigned fund balance. It's different. It's not a town meeting vote. It's you as wastewater commissioners can make that decision. So it's really more of an accounting question than sort of like a. Exactly. So, yeah, there's, there's the maintenance accounts and then the rest of them, the kind of smaller things. Well, I mean, there are some.
Four millions, it's not, nothing's small in there.
No, nothing's small. I think, I was going to say smaller, like computers and.
There's a lot of, if I can, I'm sorry, Audrey.
Jump in, Jody, jump in.
It's a Scottish in me. So there are a lot of capital improvements that were not part of the FY 21 appropriation. These have been accounts that have been brought forward from maybe FY 20 to FY 21 have not been completed and it's going to FY 22. So it's not necessarily the, the fees that were assessed for FY 21. It also, for the, the majority of the carryforwards, which is 1.1 million, are, are the reserves. Those have been just saved up and, and I think as Dave Bolstrich has said, if, if something goes, it's usually a six-figure item. And so, and it's kind of goes along the same lines as the, as the general fund budget where, especially in, in public works case where we budget so much because we don't know if something might, a costly item might need to be replaced, so that, it's kind of in that perspective.
And I mean, and a lot of that money too is going towards paying the upfront contribution for the town of Rockport's share of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
That's a very useful, very useful, okay. Thank you so much.
I'll just, I'll call on myself because, yeah, so about all those uncompleted projects, I mean, basically along, like, I hear the explanation, but if we're saying that they've been, some of them have been carried forward even more than just this year, what we're, you know, for example, the Cob Hill culverts, that's like, some of these are urgent things that really should have been done. And I understand, you know, one of them was supposed to start, I think Dave told us last time, it was going to start this week, but they hadn't really maybe realized it was going to rain or something like that, but it looks to me like we're getting quite a backlog of projects that have been identified. Then we just, last week or two weeks ago, saddled Dave with basically the job of, of really stepping up the inflow and infiltration study. We're basi, we're, we have projects that aren't getting done for whatever reason, but assigning him to now be doing that this year, then the whole treatment plant upgrade and all of that stuff, then additional new projects, I mean, at what point, and I know we already increased the wastewater budget, but is this a staffing issue? Do we need more staff at the wastewater plant? Why aren't we, I mean, for me, a big consistent frustration has been sometimes we budget for things like, you can see there are even two different INI study accounts. One of those, I think, was started because of us trying to force in some progress on this INI issue that wasn't really happening and so then, but, and again, that just wasn't quite able to be spent. And I understand it takes a lot of staffing to spend. And then, you know, that brings us to the other issue of all the other responsibilities we've saddled Dave with, with managing the dams and I just feel like they're probably at the breaking point over there.
I would argue that Dave Bolstrich probably is my busiest department head in terms of the quantity of projects and their dollar value.
Is there something?
And then we've got the Rockport stuff that all of a sudden, you know, that, that requires a lot of, I just wonder how he's possibly going to get it all done.
Whoa.
I mean, I think.
And how we prioritize.
The answer is there are, there are certain things that go on the back burner, unfortunately.
But, so the question is valid, could we use some of those reserves to hire temporary staff or to have those projects completed? Because the, the issue is that carrying forward monies because we can't finish a project is not efficient management. If we hire someone temporarily, at least to do some of the most urgent ones, then we can move forward.
I mean, Pearl Street's probably, some of those are probably on hold because of, they're going to do Pearl Street, I'm guessing, when.
They do the Pearl Street.
You know, just like we carried forward the Pearl Street stuff in Public Works, that's all going to happen when Pearl Street gets done and that got delayed. all going to happen when Pearl Street gets done and that got delayed because of various reasons.
Yes. So until we get an answer on whether, so maybe we can table?
We can, of course, but I.
Because maybe we need to talk to Dave about.
One of the important pieces here is if there, if there are items, I thought I heard mentioned that have been carried forward for more than one year, that's getting a little long. And I am concerned with Dave's.
I would, I would say that, like, I could go down the list now with pretty much all of them. And I'd say that, you know, with the maintenance lines, we've already, we've already kind of talked about that. It's just, you know, that's like cash on hand in case there's an issue going into the operational budget. For the capital improvements, I think the computers is pretty self-explanatory. The INI study, that's just more, you know, money that will go into that particular account for that particular project.
So we can finish it.
Mechanic Street pipeliner, I think that that also sort of got lumped into like a larger project that we were hoping to do on Mechanic Street that, you know, we still, yeah, so I think that that.
But if that pipe needs to be lined, it should not wait until we redesign Mechanic Street to be like a complete street, if that's what that's waiting for and we know.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it is anymore. With the Pearl Street, that's absolutely on hold until we do that whole reconstruction of that street. And the Cobb Hill culvert replacement, that's going to happen, you know, this year.
So there's five projects, basically, because computers is another project, right?
Right, and then the, all the reserve accounts, that's all the.
That's all the reserve.
Yeah.
I mean, we do need all of that money to do those projects, so I guess I wouldn't see any reason to not carry it forward. It's just the larger issue of like, how, you know, making sure that Dave has enough time to do it.
We've talked, we've talked, we talk about staffing, we've talked about, you know, certain departments get the, because they're hot departments, you know, fire department, snowball, you know, this is, wastewater is not something you sit there and go, wow, they're overworked, but it sounds like he is. Is there something we can do to help? Do we need to put in a budget for another person? You know, it's not, it's a tough thing because these are not things where you get another person that can go out and dig the lines, but is there something we can do to help?
I mean, I would say that things like, it's so hard because it's like the department head is responsible for everything, so even if you do get another person, you know, David still has to oversee that person. And like with the INI study, you know, Dave or his staff, they're not going to be doing that study, but they still have to be involved and there's a lot of information that are going to have to give them. It's very iterative with whoever you're working with that is the consultant, so I really don't, I don't see any good way out of this but through it, quite honestly. I think we just need to.
Yeah, I can't identify one person is going to.
I mean, when we talk about the Montgomery Dam, maybe there's a place where you can take something off his plate because him being the dam control agent, I think it's underappreciated how much work and how many man-hours that is.
We'll discuss that later.
So basically, we could approve the carryforwards and have a discussion with Dave.
Yeah, I think so.
On the management and the operations.
Yeah, I think we do, because I think there's a lot of items here that I totally agree. I think we need to track how long.
I mean, and you can, like, you can ask Dave Bolstrich, like, are you, like, are you, you're okay with this workload or like, can you take on another thing?
He'll say, yes, yes, yes.
You're never gonna, he's never gonna, he'll never complain, he'll never seem frazzled, he'll.
And he'll drive from Dixmont in the middle of the night and nobody will know.
Right, right. But that's where we need to look at the history of each one of these carryforwards and how long they've been on. That's, that's the piece of data that Smith's saying, if it's been exaggerating to make a point, if one of these has been carrying forward for the last two years, I'd question about.
Well, I mean, and a lot of it has to do, and I've talked about this with the select board before, the way that we've traditionally budgeted for projects. We get a broad, without doing any engineering, we get a broad estimate of what the project is going to cost. You know, the person in my position brings that sort of estimated figure to the budget committee without any planning done and says, okay, well, if you want to do this project, this is how much it's going to cost. You know, between the budget committee, the select board review and town meeting, if that project is approved, then we start doing the engineering and then we run into all of these other things, particularly if it has to do with like, you know, redeveloping a road and there's utilities involved and, you know, if it's an MDOT-like project where we're working together on it, there can be all kinds of other, you know, right-of-way work or you name it. So it can be that we budget for a project and we don't end up doing it until like two financial years later because by the time you've done all the engineering, the right-of-way work and all of the other components that are necessary to actually get to the construction phase, it just takes a long time. And, I mean, that's, and because wastewater is a utility, they often get dragged into that as well where, you know, we, we sort of budget for it through the general fund, Dave Bolstrich has to go and scramble and budget for it as well, but we're actually not really ready to go until two years later. And I, I mean, and I absolutely see that as a problem. I've wanted to do, do it in a different way because not only is it inefficient, we're currently constantly carrying this money forward, it also, by the time we get ready to do the project, you look at the estimate that you, you used two years ago and it's not even close to what the actual cost is.
Can I ask one question? Dave's not the kind of guy that's going to complain.
No.
Could you ask him if there's anything we can do to help?
Absolutely.
Because sometimes it's not obvious to us and he, he won't volunteer, but maybe we should just go.
Because the answer is going to be no.
But at least we asked.
I think, I think it's.
But I think also, maybe to the, to your point, thinking of the wastewater budget on a two or three-year timeline, instead of an annual line, annual timeframe would really help us forecast a little bit better and understand when we started a project, when we underspent, because this is, these are not annual underspends, they're multi-year underspend.
That's what I'm concerned about. I think that's, that's the concern and I think what we're saying is we can approve this tonight, but the caution is we've got to track the duration of these on the list because if they continue to linger, then we have to think about other actions with the wastewater budget.
Yes.
Now, are the year-end financials for the, for wastewater in? Yes. Is there stuff that's going into the wastewater unassigned fund? Like, I see here all the carryforwards, but is there money?
There will be very little going into the unassigned fund balance this year.
Right, and that's by design, of course, but, so I see the revenue, hold on, where's the, are we, is this all wastewater here? Wastewater revenue, but not, is wastewater expenses in a different, oh, here we.
Yeah, the expenses are after the revenue.
Because it's like, snowball revenue, wastewater revenue, then you go, snowball expenses, basically. Okay.
All right. We have a motion to accept.
We already did it.
We already have a motion, this is the discussion after the motion.
That's my suggestion, we'll discuss it. Thank you for reminding me.
No, I didn't remind you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, 5-0. Thank you with the.
But we need to adjourn as wastewater commissioners.
One more thing that.
For the wastewater commissioners.
So, I will ask that you table this item because I have been in touch, this is the supplemental environmental project.
Oh, okay.
Right, because that should have been on.
You want to table that?
No, no, I'm not asking you to table it because, for any procedural reason, but it's more of, it's not ready to go. So, I've been working with the staff at Aldemir Farm who submitted the request to the, you know, the, the project to the state as well as Laura, the enforcement officer from the state. And Laura clarified to us the process that the DEP needs to go through to approve these projects. So, there's just a few more steps on the DEP's end, so I don't need you to approve anything tonight, but it just would be good to find out from the five of you if this is generally something that you'd support. And I said I would ask about it so that, you know, if the DEP goes through the process and they approve this project, it's a, you know, something that all of you are familiar with, I know you're supportive of, and basically we're, you know, able to act quickly on it.
Mark, go ahead.
I have Aldemir, I think they do great work. I was really delighted to see that we were going to work with them to do this. I think it's a great idea.
Allison.
I just think the order of everything is a little bit off because it's part of a consent decree, so we should be, we haven't even looked at language from the consent decree.
Well, that's my, that's my point, that's what Laura and I had that conversation.
And I, I think it's great to, you know, say our, our normal fine would be something like $8,000 and instead we can do a, you know, fund a beneficial project that's going to be $10,000 that is going to benefit both Camden and Rockport. And I think that's all great, but I don't want to see is it taking, and it doesn't seem from the proposal, it doesn't seem like it will take a bunch of time, but I would hope that it would be something that would be like, you know, we write a check for the, what would have been the fine and they take it from there. I don't want to get involved with like our town staff going over and evaluating fences because that's the kind of thing.
Yeah, and just to be very clear, we're basically, we're basically writing a check to Aldemir Farm for the cost of the fencing, invasive plant management, and then some planting, and then they do all the work. Yeah.
It's a strange thing when you think about it, like the.
Yeah, so when.
It's like when we did the kayak thing at the snowball because, after all of that pollution or, sometimes I think there is, it's just better just to not fight about paying fines to the DEP and just accept, you know, we did something wrong and that's, that's just, it is what it is. So as long as it doesn't add a bunch of talk, you know, a bunch of time for us, I think that that's great.
Yeah, no, this is pretty simple. So what, what you'll get back, once this goes through the DEP's whole process, and there's like a whole process where it goes all the way up to the commissioner to get approved, so they'll give us the consent decree and the, the project that you see now will be an appendix as part of it.
Right.
And then, it's, it's as simple as we write a check to Aldemir Farm for their project, they do their project. Instead of our money going to Augusta and going into wherever it goes there, we know that it's spent on something that'll have a local benefit.
But that's going to go in there, that bucket, will there be a separate actual consent agreement that needs to be signed by us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll have that, that time also.
Yes.
You know, whenever there's a draft of that ready.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we, you want to move us to table this item for now?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we table the supplemental environmental program for wastewater consent decree.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Calls in favor, 5-0. Thank you very much.
That was another agenda mistake, that should have been as wastewater commissioners also.
We haven't adjourned as wastewater commissioners.
Right, I know, but it still didn't, it's still, none of our agenda said it was going to be as wastewater commissioners, so.
That's correct, it should have been just separated.
And I think there are actually rules about how we're supposed to like say we're going to have a wastewater meeting and all this stuff.
Absolutely.
I don't think anybody really cares, but.
Nobody's probably going to source, no. I think we need to adjourn as.
I make a motion we adjourn as wastewater commissioners and reform as this Camden select board.
Aye, second.
Motion made in second discussion. All those for approval, 5-0. Thank you very much.
Hey, we finally got Matt to respond to some of them.
The last item we have for action is the approval of the Endowment Investment Committee's recommended revised IPS or investment policy statement, which is in your packet. Some, just as a background, because I was involved with, before we shut down things, the investment committee had met earlier this year to discuss clarifying, putting more into, most of what was done was put into more layman language, the investment policy statement. The targets have not really changed or anything like that. There are a couple of minor changes that are of moderate significance. One is there's a allowance for a certain number of certain quality of ETFs, basically a trust fund, on instruments which never existed when this IPS was written. That's an example, some of the changes. The, the metrics for the performance of the funds, managers, funds are updated to what's more currently used today for, as I just mentioned, for fixed asset versus equities. There is one other subtle changes in there on the very first page where it says we, the town would be hiring investment managers, it's plural, you had, the select board would have the option, if it should so decide, as most IPS do, to have more than one investment advisor. You know, it's a, it's a.
Good governance.
It's a smart strategy because you, you need competition here because investment, they're all good, but they have different philosophies of investment depending on the size of the funds and that kind of thing. Those are the most significant changes to it. Everything else, I believe, is just clarification on a more layman language kind of thing. Questions?
Yes, two questions, for which probably you and I could discuss forever. So I will not launch into a conversation about the utility of having cash in such fund. I think it's a, it's a waste of an opportunity. Cash is, is not, is rewarded like 0.01 percent. You're going to make more money on your bonds and your equities, but.
Totally agree, totally agree. In fact, it could have come.
Oh my, this is starting to go over my head, we might need a.
These are people that have money, they know how to discuss.
No, I was eating them.
We manage money. No, but so, and I don't want to, you know, I'm going to agree with the asset allocation, I was just, you know, I'm, I was a little bit saddened to see that we didn't put a requirement for at least a proportion of those funds to have a social impact.
Oh, thank you for the segues, Sophie.
Or a green bond or a gender bond or something, and we may want to talk with investment advisors because some of them, you know, Calvert friends, they regularly beat the S and P 500. So it's not only a good social justice approach, but it's also a financial, a good financial position.
That's back to the function of my mind of who the, who the investment advisor uses. On my experience, the larger they are, the more difficult that is because they have modules, they put you in based on the size of your accounts. That's why, that's part of the reason for having the option of the S on investment advisors.
Right. But if we could still have like a social impact in, in the language.
We could do that.
I think it would be.
We could do, in the equities or the fixed?
I would put it in the equities.
I would have to.
Yeah.
The fixed income is.
There's, there's a few bonds around, I mean.
Well, there's a lot of bonds around, there's a lot of bonds around.
No, but I mean, but the social bonds, like green bonds.
Yep, yep.
But I think in equities, you'd be better off.
Well, we can either implement it in here or just direct the investment advisor to do that. That's either way it can work. That's very simple to do. It didn't contemplate that. The problem with that is in a statement like this, things change and I want to chase the rabbits.
So, so that's the other thing, is how often do we revise or review?
Don't get me started. What caused this, what caused this whole thing was, I was trying to discuss the IPS, investment policy statement, to not use acronyms, with the investment committee and I, I couldn't find which one was the latest one.
Okay.
And I found the one that was approved by a select board before all of our times in 2015.
Right.
Yet, it was, it had the current investment accounts listed in 2017 and I don't know, so I said, no, that's it, we're doing this thing, that's what happened.
And lastly, caution about.
We can, to your point, we can revise this anytime we want.
Cool, and look at the performance once a year, twice a year?
Oh, no, four times a year.
Four times a year, every quarter, that's good.
Yeah, they'll start sending you lots of stuff in the mail.
Yeah, I just, just got one.
Good.
For the most recent funds, which are now over, Endowment is over 6.2 million.
That's it.
Just the Endowment funds.
Thank you both.
Allison.
Yes, because it's sort of in line with what, what Sophie was discussing, and I've mentioned this many times before, but it's always kind of like the devil's in the details and are you, you know, cultural relativism versus universal values and what's really good and bad and how can anybody decide? And by, and then at the end, we're still invested in Coca-Cola and Dunkin' Donuts and Exxon and, and so, but when you look at the list of the companies that, that were invested in, I mean Dunkin' Donuts is my favorite to cite because you look at what happened in Camden when Dunkin' Donuts tried to come to town and it was like the fastest mobilizing of, like, for community action against something of, of anything that ever happened in Camden. And then we're taking Endowment funds and investing them in Dunkin' Donuts. I know you can't prevent every single instance of that, but it's just the, that, like, in terms of the ability for us to, you know, if we say we care about climate change and all of those things, we should at least pretend that like invest, you know, where we invest our money, that does make a difference at some level. And if we were just going to throw up our hands and say it doesn't really matter, then matter, then I don't.
So I'm going to meet you halfway there, because I think on one hand, the mission of the trusts that are using the money, all of them have a social mission. And if we can raise money on the market to make their mission valuable, I'm all for it. However, we could also have an exclusionary clause that says, like, many, many investment funds, or even private equity funds, will not invest in alcohol, tobacco, firearms.
Right.
And that's, that's a pretty easy thing. If you're going to exclude, exclude agribusinesses, that's going to be hard. And you'll have to have a lot of criteria, and I'm not sure it's worth it.
It has to be categorical, otherwise, and one of the problems is you, they're buying mutual funds, or ETFs.
Yeah, yeah.
And you don't know what's in those packets. There could be a hundred bonds. I get the point. You can do, I would agree, categorical, like.
It's something we want to support rather than something we don't. But there are, you know, big companies that are, they spend their money to actively lobby against town interests, and, you know, it's like having, and we could be.
So the issue is that you're buying.
Investing our money in buying bonds for projects that help municipalities, like stuff like that. Why don't we turn the whole thing into a microcredit lending fund, and...
Lose money fast.
Not all of them. We have a good one in El Salvador.
But thank you, Bob, for, for.
Well, again, this is a shot. I understand the point. It's just that in my experience, unless you do a categorization of anybody, but even then, I don't know how you limit that from mutual funds and the like to be invested.
But you, you can exclude alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. It's really easy to do.
You can do that.
Because fund managers are used to that. So that's, but I'm saying, you know, we want, we want Whole Foods, but not Dunkin' Donuts. It's going to be really.
Yeah, I get it. It's just, I mean, it's just a fun example that kind of, but is Sophie on the investment committee?
Not yet.
Because what we really need is somebody that can keep up with Bob, and I can say this kind of thing, but I don't, I, no, no, but it's, we, we need a little.
My spot.
We need that kind, you know, somebody who can speak the way that you do.
Well, remember, one of the former members was Janice. We have to replace her. So that's going to, we don't meet that often. But, yeah, I just don't know. And you know what? I think we should try to proceed with something. I don't care who qualifies. And then we can, the next investment committee is probably going to be in the fall. We can, we can address that at that time. But again, the key there is different managers, because certain managers have different philosophies of how they manage funds.
Absolutely.
So.
Let's invest in broadband. No, just kidding. So let's invest in broadband.
We already are. Anyway, do we have?
Do we approve this new draft, or what?
Yes, we approve the draft. And then, again, it's just, just a draft would be effective today, July 20th. We can change it July 21st if we want to, but it's a tremendous improvement from what it was. And in fact, is we don't really have an active one anyway.
No, it's very clear. It's, I moved that we approve the draft of the investment.
Policy statement.
Policy statement of the Town of Camden.
Second.
Does it have a date assigned to it?
It will, it will be today. In fact, it's, I believe it's printed on the draft, on the last page.
Let me take a look.
No? It should be.
Uh, that's, yes, adopted July 20th.
All right.
Do we vote?
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Well, Mark's seconded.
Very quiet tonight.
I heard him.
I think his bowtie's too tight.
That's very possible. I haven't had to wear one for 15 months. It's a.
I know. It's, it's so refreshing to see the bowtie again, I swear. Okay, motion made. I digress.
I'm sorry. You did, yes, you were digressing? You were actively digressing? Go back.
Yes, yes. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Halls in favor? Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you for the mention.
This is why it's much better when we meet in person, right? There's much more banter.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure people are listening in, especially my mother-in-law is in, joining in. She actually apologized to me that she would be late today.
Oh, okay.
We did plenty of bannerings on Zoom too, and we didn't then exclude people from, there are all these, you know, only certain people can come and hang out at a meeting in here with us for.
Um, let's see, the next time we have, we have a couple.
Just in case anybody wondered where I stand on Zoom meetings.
I think we can probably skip the next discussion. I don't see anybody interested in Montgomery Dam anywhere, so I think we can just sort of move forward.
We've already decided, right?
So that's the rumor. Before we get into, that next item is update on the Coastal Communities Grant Project, and the, also the gate strategy, et cetera. But I, we received a very nice letter today, yesterday, from the watershed school. And I thought that was, it was kind of impressive to me, because I'm not, don't always read all those things, to be honest with you, but I did. Well, because I got a lot of emails, but, but it was impressive not, it wasn't written by one or two people. It was written by the school.
Yeah.
And as a courtesy, I think it'd be appropriate to read that in this meeting. Mark, do you have it? Do you want to read it? It's on your phone as an email.
Okay.
Or I'll do it, but I thought you, you speak better than I do.
Okay, let me find it. Hold on a second.
And while you look for it, I would really encourage the local press to publish it, because those kids have done an amazing job. And we need to encourage more environmental stewards.
Okay.
And they go through a whole process where they reach school consensus.
Yeah, that was, that was very impressive what they did.
I was very impressed, too.
I, I do remember that we've been given instructions before by Juniper that these microphones are supposed to be kept quite close.
Yes, yes.
And I worry.
That nobody's hearing me.
I think Bruce would probably speak up, maybe if we couldn't hear, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You ready for me to read this? This is, Dear Town of Camden Select Board and Library Board of Trustees, the Town of Camden has shown its commitment to addressing the climate crisis in a number of areas, and we are pleased to hear about the considerations being made in regards to the future of the McGuntuk watershed and Montgomery Dam. As high school students, we represent some of the youngest members of our community, many of us having grown up enjoying the beauties of the McGuntuk River and Lake. To that end, we want to give our strong support to the town's initiative to restore the McGuntuk River to its full ecological and natural potential. Long before European settlers came to the Penobscot region, the McGuntuk River was a thriving and abundant ecosystem home to a multitude of diadromus.
Diadromus.
Diadromus fish, and a sustaining habitat for numerous species. Upon their arrival in the 1760s, European settlers harnessed the river's water flow, constructing power dams which spanned from the mouth of the harbor to McGuntuk Lake. The Town of Camden replied, relied upon the river to power the town's meals and economy. Since then, the McGuntuk watershed has served as a cultural and economic focal point in our historic town. Along its 3.5 mile span, the river now weaves through a tapestry of old infrastructure, including the remnants of multiple 18th century mill factories and seven decaying dams. While at the time, these dams served as an important driver of Camden's economy, today only the few that controlled the water level in McGuntuk Lake and Norton Pond serve an actual functional purpose. We recognize the magnitude of the proposed changes, especially in terms of the visual and experiential changes it would bring to Camden's historic waterfront. However, it is important to put words like historic into perspective, especially when talking about the relic infrastructure built by early European colonizers. Humans interacted with the McGuntuk long before settlers built the dams that we see today. The Penobscot tribal peoples depended upon this region's once thriving natural rivers. Sea run fish were a major source of food in the spring and summer months. When the rivers opened up in the spring, masses of sea rung species would flood in from the ocean, filling brooks and streams throughout the entire watershed. Not only did these fish bring sustenance to indigenous tribes, but they deposited essential nutrients from the sea into the rivers. Sea run fish also provide vital prey for some of Maine's most favorite birds. Many species, including non-sea run fish like brook trout, reply on, rely on clean cold pools as a sanctuary during the hot summer months. Natural flowing rivers are inherently cooler. Dams, however, slow the pace of a river. The slower current allows the water to get warmer, causing it to lose dissolved oxygen, which can lead to fatal conditions for many species. From overfishing and climate change to the impacts of anthropogenic pollution, sea run fish both continue to lose habit, it should be habitat, through the northeast watersheds, and suffer lower survival rates in the ocean. Sea run fish need protected spawning grounds to ensure the survival of their populations. They need our river. We encourage the town to imagine the McGuntuk in its natural state. Each year, American eels, oil lives, blueback herring, sea lamprey, rainbow smelt, and sea run brook trout, just to name a few, could be seen traveling upstream from the harbor all the way to McGuntuk Lake and beyond. It would be quite a spectacle at the mouth of the river. Schoolchildren, local residents, and tourists alike could gather to watch the thousands of fish navigate the current upstream to their spawning grounds. Parents, instead of worrying about their children toppling over the seawall, could sit back as they play and explore along a shoreline, teeming with tide pools and sea creatures. Instead of a standing concrete pool, tourists and locals alike could sit overlooking a beautiful natural cascading waterfall. We believe the Town of Camden also has potential to be a leader in coastal climate resilience. The proposed project, while crucial to the health of our watershed, also provides vital infrastructure adaptations to address sea level rise and increases in extreme precipitation events due to climate change. In periods of heavy rain, the McGuntuk River in its current state threatens to flood roads, drainage systems, and neighboring buildings. In addition, as the river floods dry land, it sweeps pollutants into the watershed. Right now, the McGuntuk, while beautiful, is a shadow of its former natural self. Before the dams impeded the passage of essential sea run species, the entire watershed benefited from a much stronger connection to the sea. While Camden may no longer rely on the river as a source of energy or food, we still enjoy it for its beauty and recreational opportunities. The river is central to our way of life here in Camden. From tourism dollars and recreation to water drainage and public health, we are all intrinsically connected to the McGuntuk. Therefore, we offer our strong encouragement and support for the McGuntuk River Restoration Project. Respectfully, the students of Watershed School.
Thanks for reading that. Mark's a thoughtful, but very well-written letter by the whole student body. With that as a good intro to, first item of discussion under the Montgomery Dam, is basically the update on the Coastal Communities Grant Project that we embarked on some months ago, maybe too many months ago. But Audrey, your, your letter's in the packet in terms of how this developed, and maybe you want to give us a little capsule of that, so that we can, we have to discuss the status of that, that Coastal Community Grant.
Certainly. So I'm happy to, you know, sort of paraphrase my, my memo a little bit. So we received this grant in May of 2019. Like everything that was, you know, done around that time, COVID sort of really held up, you know, a lot of progress on the work on this project. And, you know, the reason why we applied for this grant was because it fit so perfectly with, you know, the dam removal and the river channel restoration option that was identified in Interflue's report. They actually looked at 10 different options that could be considered in terms of, you know, how we were going to move forward with the dam into the future. So they looked at 10 different options, and of those 10 options, the dam removal option that had the restoration of the natural river channel was the one, the one thing that best addressed the flooding issues associated with the dam. And that's going to become more of an issue into the future if you look at sort of the impacts of climate change and what that's doing on, you know, the number of rain events and the severity of rain events we're experiencing. I mean, this month of July is a perfect example of that, having, you know, rainstorms in the middle of July in Maine, where you're getting five inches of water dumped down on you in, you know, sort of like a two-hour period. You know, those are the sorts of things that we can expect much more into the future. And having a piece of infrastructure that artificially sort of impounds water and creates a flood hazard for the private property owners around, also, you know, the town's land, because we're a pretty major landowner. If you look at the public lending, as well as, you know, the Harbor Park, even though the library board technically has a management responsibility, it is a town-owned piece of land, as well as the, the road infrastructure. That's a significant flood risk that really has no other purpose other than an aesthetic one, because, you know, that dam's function is largely aesthetic. So that was a concern. The amount of, you know, maintenance and staff time associated with caring for the dam was originally what the select board also wanted to look into. And that kind of gets back to the, sorry, the point about Dave Bolstridge and his, his workload. So he goes and inspects every single dam that the town is responsible for. So it's Montgomery, it's Seabright, East West Dams. He goes and inspects them all every single day. With the Montgomery Dam, there's always a number of, you know, different sort of requests for either closing or opening the gate. You know, if, if there's a rain event, he has to pay particular attention to what's the current level, you know, what does it look like at the lake? It's going back and forth between them, and it takes two people to close and open that gate, which is a pretty, you know, labor-intensive process. It's, you know, there are certain people who just can't physically do it because of how, you know, physically difficult it is. And if you're in the middle of a rainstorm, and that sometimes happens when we can't anticipate weather and the gate has to be opened, it's actually pretty dangerous for the staff people involved. And I just wanted to bring this all up as part of this discussion, because I don't think, I, I think that our staff do a really good job in making things look pretty effortless, and a lot of people take for granted that these things are happening. Yes, it is their job, but is, you know, that's kind of a question of the select board, and I think the townspeople as well. We're, we're putting town employees at some level of risk and dedicating not a small amount of town resources to managing a piece of infrastructure for the benefit of a few private property owners, for no other purpose than an aesthetic one. I really think that we need to sort of like, you know, this study was all about questioning that. And so when we looked at sort of all those factors, and, and also the environmental benefit, not just sort of like the long-term cost, maintenance, flood resiliency, but also the environmental benefits. It was very clear from that report that the dam removal, channel restoration was the, the option that if we wanted to, you know, do what was sort of the best option in addressing all those concerns, that was the one to look at. And it happened to perfectly align with the whole purpose of the Coastal Community Grant. So that's why I applied for it. I told the select board at the time I was going to apply for it, and it was supported. And so we've been working on it. But I want to be very clear that the purpose of that grant and the purpose of the project that we're doing right now is dam removal, and it is river channel restoration. So what we need to do now, that we have, you know, a lot of that additional sort of engineering work done, and some data collection done, we started to get back conceptual renderings, we really need to come up with a design based on that particular scenario and get feedback on a design based on that particular scenario. I think we're having a very difficult time doing that, because there are some fundamental misunderstandings about the purpose of this project. You know, we had three listening sessions to try and get feedback on, you know, design elements, but a lot of the sessions were kind of focused on, well, why are you looking at this option? Why aren't you looking at all these other options? And what I'm saying is we have to look at this particular option now, and we need to get feedback on this particular option for the purpose of this grant. So I guess like I'm, I'm kind of bringing this to the select board, because, you know, we have until November to finish this project. It seems like a long time. It is not. We don't have a lot of time. And I really need some sort of like, you know, feedback on the design elements and figuring out how we sort of move this forward to get to a point where we do have something that can be engineered, and, and just sort of close out this project, and then figure out how you want to move it forward.
It might be good to, sometimes people don't understand the terms that we're using. And when we're saying project, the project is to fulfill the requirements of the grant. And the, the goal of that is to be able to bring people a design so that it can be understood, sort of this is, this is the best we could do, or what we came up with in terms of what a dam removal option could look like, or, you know, an option that both restores habitat and reduces our flood risk. It does not mean that that's the project that's going forward. All the time, we, we design things that people ultimately don't support. But the only way to get people to, to be able to make a decision about whether they support it or they don't is to go through this process of designing it, so.
Right. Right. I think it's important to recognize, we have a trigger here, to do this, take advantage of the grant or not. And that's, it is one data point. Because I agree, it's, it's just, we all, and to look at 3,000 feet, we all know what the dam looks like and what the design would be if we leave it as is. We, that's a given. And it has pros and cons on that side. And there are permutations, by the way, to designs too, that can, that can be affected. That's, but as we go forward, as I, we're going to have some, but we don't know what it's, what it's going to look like, because it's hard to imagine what it could look like without doing this design, having it as available as an option. Because logically, by the time this board gets to address the next action, which would be, what do we think? Should we be, leave it as is? Should we be river restoration approach? We'll have pros and cons. And then the board will have to make a decision about what or if it moves forward on something. And logically, we're not, we're talking, you know, six, eight months away. Because this, this, it's going to be a push to get this to even to June ballot. So.
Well, it's right, and then we would apply for funding, and.
Exactly. So there's a lot of steps, a lot of steps along the way. So I think, yeah, that did, does get misunderstood, that this activity with this design of this is so to put flesh on the bone of an option.
Right. And I'm really just.
To study, to study grants.
Yeah. And I'm just hyper-focused on sort of like getting, getting the feedback we need that's, you know, for a dam removal option for some sort of design.
Okay, yeah, I understood. Yeah, I understood. But I just want to make that clear. It's been difficult translating that for obvious reasons, that this Select Board action is way, way downstream. And in that regard is when they would, if there were a decision made by the board to move on something, then we get into the public hearings process and all those activities before we even go to ballot, to our legislative body, which is the voters. So, yeah, I get that. But I did, a lot of this, by the way, Audrey was right, we wanted to get this on, because we had a different Select Board when a lot of this was approved. And by the way, we'll still be discussing this at our yet-to-be-scheduled Priorities Workshop because it is one of our priorities for, under the, under the objective of responding to, but the town has, the town voters have voted to support the Maine Climate Council report. That was voted on January 26th at the snowball. So that is a document that we're, the voters have approved. And to implement that, more than just a coarse river, it affects, you know, the snowball, it affects the waterfront and et cetera, et cetera. And also, as part of that process, we will be scheduling some dates to try to get together with the library board of trustees, because we need to have an open dialogue with them about the pros and cons of the options and also, of course, as it affects their, our very precious Harbor Park. So, yeah, I get any questions, especially Mark.
Or any sort of like, you know, guidance on getting the design feedback that we need at this stage? Because, like I said, that's the most, you know, there's a variety of different things that we could do, and we've got a variety of different sort of options within this particular scenario. But, you know, I guess I'm like at a point where we really need some guidance.
Well, are you asking for, for example, in the design development package, they're going to go through various phases of design. Interfluv, I believe, is going to be doing this design.
Yes.
Yes. I think there should be litmus test in that process. And by the way, it is a short fuse. It's extremely short fuse, in my opinion, to November from, we are here effectively in August, you know, really, to think about it. But to have a, I'm not sure what phase they'll use, concept development, design development, or eventually, you know, more press documents, but there needs, I suggest that we have this brought to the table here during the development of that design for some feedback by us in the public.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm asking. Does the entire Select Board, do we set up the meetings with the entire board where we sort of go through that? Is that the?
I think yes.
What everybody would prefer.
I feel so, but I'm, I can be convinced otherwise. But I think that we, we should involve ourselves, the library board of trustees, if necessary, because it may affect developing some stuff. Though those could be done separately, of course, with us. But, you know, I think, I'd say, unless anybody disagrees, I think we should be involved. And it also allows the public to have another opportunity to have a listening session. End of your Select Board, Allison.
I think some of this is when we're saying, you know, we want, we want design input on dam removal. It's really hard, I'm just hoping I can get this to turn on here. It's hard for people to think about like, well, what, you know, dam removal is dam removal, and so what, you know, what kind of input is available there? Or what, if you don't see the different, different things that have been done in different places, it becomes very difficult to know, like what, people can't just come up with ideas on their own. And so I was just going to show really quickly here, like there's, there's like a full sort of spectrum of different types of things that can be considered. So here is like the base template for dam removal, what that might look like for the Montgomery Dam here. And so that would be, without kind of doing too much extra, just to show people kind of basically where the water would go. There's not a lot of seawall stuff and retaining wall stuff that hasn't been designed in yet that would need to happen. That's kind of the area we might need input on is like, okay, well, we'd like to try to recreate the granite sluice way over here, or we'd like some kind of stepped seawall that's easier to get down for kids, or we want tide pools, or maybe no, some, you know, some people might want a really easy shoreline. Another, this is an example of a project that happened kind of on the other extreme of things a little bit in terms of recreating a little bit of an engineered structure that recreated a waterfall. So this is in Kent, Ohio. And back in maybe 2005, it was quite a while ago, they had a contentious dam removal project, and they argued about it for like five years, and it was very much like the historic preservationists against the environmentalists. And sometimes those were the same people. And, you know, a lot of people felt like they had, the dam was on the National Register of Historic Places, it had a lot of similarities with Camden, super-environmental community, but also really loving history. And so the dam used to, it was this arch thing, it used to stretch along here, and then this was all an impoundment. And a lot of people felt like, you know, for generations, I, we've been taking pictures in front of this like waterfall feature, and they, they didn't want to lose that. So ultimately, they came up with this system where there's this recirculating waterfall, and there's this lookout thing, and there's some historical signage, and they created a little bit of a park here, and then they let the river run alongside it. And it won national awards, and most people are really happy. This is the type of thing that could be designed in if, you know, the most important thing to a large, you know, group of people is that we preserve, you know, this aspect of a reflection pool, or this aspect of a, you know, a waterfall feature. There are different ways to create the visual things that, the visual features that we really like. There are different ways to achieve that. And so I think maybe if we could get, you know, together, a woman stopped me today, and she said, you know, there's this retaining wall that I've seen in town that has this, the granite is like this, and what if we did that in Harbor Park? And so I think if we could make a really big effort to bring, when we do get together with the library board of trustees, or however we do it, to really bring like, whether we need to ask, you know, Interfluv or other experts to bring examples of different projects, and then also ask other people to bring, like, let us know what is it that you love about the way things are, and what is it that you love about like the way things you've seen somewhere else? And try to get people to stretch their imaginations a little bit, because it might be that we don't all, you know, there's not as much disagreement. Some people are going to, some people say, oh, no, not a recirculating waterfall. But when, you know, it's, but they might not, when they say they don't want a recirculating waterfall, they might not realize that what we have now is like super highly engineered and, you know, not, so anyway.
But to answer your question directly, I think I've heard pretty clearly, the Select Board would like to see some phases of this design development brought to the table so we can discuss it, and we can decide whether the Select Board's then in the library or both, whatever, we can decide that.
What I'm saying is, the Select Board has been very clear here tonight that we want to see the phases of this, you know, various phases, whatever Interfluv recommends to have brought to the Select Board for discussion, and then we can decide whether we do it all in one session with the library trustees, or do it as a next-day kind of thing. It's all, that's all about schedules, by the way. But we, that would help all of us to, and an opportunity for more opportunities for public input on some of the options that Allison's talking about.
We need some concrete things. So Interfluv is at the point where we can't, they can give us a schedule of design, whatever, but we're, it's a lot of talking about broad concepts, and I feel like not enough of looking at like, this is what this kind of seawall can look like, and this is what this, and, you know, then we can say, well, we need 15 quick sketches of this, 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 and this. But at this point, we're, we're kind of paralyzed with like, do we, I feel like I heard from quite a few people, we'd like to see, you know, some kind of option where a waterfall that looks like it does now could, you know, is that feasible? Is that, but we're just at the point where we need to give them some direction on actual design.
Yeah, but also, we're the town of Camden, we've been pretty innovative with our designs, right? The library for once. I mean, so I think we need to be bold a little bit more. Sorry, I interrupted you, Mark, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I just want to say, I have a lot to say about the subject, but I would like to hear, we have some people that have, you know, some things that they would like to discuss, and I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Thank you, Mark. I was just going to make a cry from the public for more.
Ken, would you mind coming up here, please?
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Get you moving there, Ken. And if you wouldn't mind, please introduce yourself, and also as a courtesy and rules of order, try to make three minutes if you can, please.
Thank you. My name's Ken Gross, I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight. And I appreciate hearing that you are moving to other designs, because so far, all we've seen is the one design from the Interfluv Report, which is, I got to say, is the most destructive, least likely, least likely to get voted for. And I'd like to also say, I don't think there's any misunderstanding. We understand all the terms and the direction that the current grant is going. But what I'd like to do is take a step back and I did prepare a remark, because as a long-term resident of the town of Camden.
Sure.
There will be a time after this event, this is going to be controversial, because in spite of what the young students said at Watershed, nobody in town wants to see the waterfall destroyed. And that's why it is controversial. So my plea is to turn this win-lose situation into a win-win situation. Win-lose, meaning that if you have two sides who don't agree on anything, and you have to pick a winner, half the town of Camden is going to be bitterly disappointed if the dam is destroyed. The other half of town will be dissatisfied if the fish can't make it up to McGunta Cook Lake. So there is a magic solution, and that is the compromise. It turns a win-lose into a win-win. And the compromise is outlined in the Interfluv Report. It's option one, which preserves the dam and allows for fish passage.
And I just got to say, that's not, that's not a win-win, and that's not a compromise situation, because that's the highest price tag, the most amount of maintenance, and we still have all the flood issues that we have now. So I just, I think we need to be very, very clear that that is not a compromise, and that is not a win-win. Because a fish ladder is a very expensive piece of infrastructure.
Well, this evening, we're not going to get into a debate on various options, but I can tell you that this board will be looking at the pros and cons of the options that we'll have available, including the results of this, as I said, of this grant is one piece of data, and will have to take a look at the other pieces probably into next year when we start evaluating those, Ken. But this is not.
And I got to, and I also, I just want to make it very clear to the board, I'm not going to be able to go out and get a grant to design just a fish ladder without removing the dam. That is not possible.
Understood.
There is no funding body that will fund a project like that, because, and I just.
Yet there are funds for preservation and seawall reconstruction. I mean, have you looked for?
I have, Ken, but they are not going to permit reconstructing that seawall as it is now. That's never going to happen.
Ken, would you please finish, and then we can go on for a.
Yes, thank you. I was just going to ask if there will be more scenarios offered, because right now, most people are convinced that there is only one option that's ever going to be viewed, and they're unhappy with that one option if it includes dam destruction.
Yeah, I think we've been pretty clear that this board will be evaluating whatever information, but the one piece that we don't have a lot of information without doing the work on, because leaving it as is is kind of obvious, we all feel and understand that. But, and there are options on that too. But this option of using this grant money to put flesh on the bone of what it could, would, would look like through the grant monies is essential, so that we can have the data to start, at some point, to make a decision about the pros and cons of options.
But, I mean, I want to make no mistake about it, this isn't, I, I know there's been a lot of focus on fish passage, and I think that's a wonderful outcome. But the reason why funding bodies, particularly the state of Maine, are interested in this project is because of the flood resiliency benefits.
Absolutely. No question about it, it's a huge item. I agree.
And there is no way to address the flood resiliency issues without removing the dam. And it's as simple as that.
I have to point out that the Interfluv Report says that the Montgomery Dam does not contribute to flooding.
It does not say that, Ken. You're reading the report wrong if you say that. And I, and the reason why I'm saying this now is because I've heard you say this five times now, and it's putting out information that is not factually correct to the public.
Leave what report you pay for.
The report does not say that. I'm, I'd be happy to go through the report with you and explain it to you, Ken. I'd be happy to.
Side item, Ken, we can certainly have a discussion with that, no problem at all.
Audrey brought up the.
But I mean, I would be, Ken, I would be happy to get Mike Burke from Interfluv to come and explain this to you. I, I mean, I really think it's important, because people trust you, you're a public official, you're employed by the library, and you're saying things that aren't factually correct. So it's very difficult for us to have conversations about facts when people who are trusted in the community are saying things that are factually incorrect.
The last thing we want to get into is, you know this, Ken, you're a big boy like the rest of us, he said, she said. We agree with clarifying, let's do it together.
Oh, I will leave you with one other observation, is that your actions seem to be driven by the grant requirements, and it's leading down a path that we need to step back from and choose a different route.
Your point's taken, I understand. I don't agree, that's irrelevant, your point is taken. The grant is there, we're going to, you're going to take advantage of the information it's going to provide us, because as a Select Board member, I want to see the pros and cons of the various elements, not the least of which, what it can look like and feel like with, with public input. Because, because the most dramatic option is to remove the dam, obviously. And to do that with cartoons or, you know, just hearsay, I'm not doing it. So we're going to get that first before we go forward.
Great.
Again, good to see you again, thank you.
Thank you all.
We've got a lot more discussions to go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennis, would you lightly introduce yourself, Dennis, as you know?
Hi, I'm Dennis McGurk, Camden resident. I participated in one of the Zoom listening sessions, and I watched the others. And I have some concerns based on that and my history with working with government projects in the past. I have a lot of personal experience with government projects. One of the concerns I have is that it's very easy to get very far down a path on a design, conditional design. It might not be the final design, but when it comes time to revise the design, the money's been spent, there's no more money for more designs. So the process that I've found works best is to have conceptual designs, not detailed designs, but conceptual designs, kind of like the drawing that you have up here. But that, not this particular, yeah, that drawing. But this represents one of many scenarios, and it's an optimistic scenario. It's not an astronomical high tide, it does not take into account the sea level rise. For every inch that sea level rises, we lose 10 to 15 inches of lawn space of the Harbor Park area. In 30 years, we expect typically about a foot and a half of loss, so we're going to lose 25, 30 feet, something like that of that area, if we do nothing. So the question is, if we do something, what is it going to look like under those circumstances? And I recognize that there are tons of scenarios one could come up with, but this is an optimistic scenario. We ought to bound it. And there ought to be a 30-year from now to 2050, foot and a half high tide, astronomical high tide, and a foot and a half sea level as a bounding case, as the opposite end. And if we have several different options represented in graphics like this, the public gets a chance to see what it really is going to be like to live here. If they only see this one, they get misled. And I think that they would be upset by being misled if this is the only one that they see. So I'm encouraging you to do some renderings of conceptual approaches early on, not later on when the engineering's been done and the money's been spent.
Right.
Okay. That's number one. The second thing I wanted to bring up is, do you have specific plans for what to do about sea level rise along? You've talked about the flooding between the dam and 25 Mechanic Street, which is an interesting area, but I haven't seen, and that's speculative about how much rain we're going to get. Very little speculation about how much sea level we're going to, rise we're going to get, other than beyond a foot and a half, and how. and how far into the future you want to speculate. But it's a certainty that we're gonna have sea level rise. And so I would like to know what specific plans you have to begin to accommodate that. And with regard to the flooding area, do you have, I saw the Interfluv Report, which had an outline of the flood area, but it did not have water depths. And so you could have places where the edge of it, you know, have very shallow water depths, but it's flooded. And you have other places where it's pretty severe, and it would be nice to know which is which. And you can't tell that from the Interfluv Report. And I know you've been doing some surveying, so it would be helpful to have those kinds of profiles.
Great.
Could you put, if you were to, I think some of that might be in writing, but that kind of stuff is, if you give us a, you know, bullet point list of those things.
I'd be glad to do that.
Yep.
I'm not surprised that people were asking questions you didn't expect in the hearings, because you've made a decision about what you want to do, which is to remove the dam. There was no public discussion leading to that. It was only, so people were surprised. They were being asked to comment on what to do specifically, what, how would you like to tweak the design, not whether or not we should have a dam removal. That discussion should be taking place before we get into the tweaking of the design. Otherwise, people feel like, wait a minute, I'm being pushed into a corner here. And we, I don't think we want that.
Of course we don't. Of course we don't. But I think that's where the misconception came from, because that's not exactly.
I've heard from a number of people that said, wait a minute, they've already decided something I'm not ready to decide, and I haven't heard any discussion. And in my experience in working with corporations, one of the difficulties is that you've got a number of quantitative criteria. The cost, the schedule, a number of other things. And then you've got some non-quantitative aesthetic kind of criteria and what people want. And the tendency often that leads to mistakes is to put emphasis only on the quantitative ones. And then the non-quantitative ones get pushed aside because it's very difficult to have discussions about them. And it's so much easier to say, well, this one costs a million dollars more than that one, so therefore. And what happens then is you wind up with the least cost solution, not necessarily the best solution.
That's very true.
I've seen that a lot.
Yep.
Final question was, I remember that there was a study of tannery toxic silt done some time ago. If Parker Late was still around, I could ask him for it, but he's not. And so do you have a copy of that? Do we know? Because at that time, there was a recommendation that we not get rid of the dams because of the toxic silt that would wind up going downstream.
So as part of all of this planning, because we do have another grant for the entire river that we're doing a feasibility study for, and part of that project was sampling sediment in all the impoundments and all of the dams. And I think there's, yeah, the toxic sediment issue has been much
Aunted about.
exaggerated over the years. So we found that.
It would be helpful to see the report. Do you have copies of it? I appreciate your comments, and I think, really, put those bullet points into an email.
I'd be glad to do that.
I think you're, there, when I started this conversation, it's been, I said that we were putting some flesh on the bone of, in option, options. And I agree with you, by the way. That's why I think the select board needs to see this design as it evolves to a point, because you might want to stop it there. You might want, you may get redirected. I agree with you completely, because we don't want to go, I'm exaggerating, we don't want to go all the way to construction documents and say, good luck, that's not gonna work. So I get that part.
It happens by accident. It doesn't happen necessarily deliberately, but you run out of money.
We've both seen it, and that's not gonna happen here.
And that's why, you know, in my experience in working with corporations, they use a very systematic process. They're trying to say, all right, here are all the criteria that are of interest to us. Let's go through them multiple times and see which is more important, and how does that turn out, and does that lead us in one direction or another. Then you go through it again. You do it multiple times, if it's an important project. Simple decisions you can do very easily. But for something as complex with as many dimensions of this, both quantitative and non-quantitative, it requires a systematic process. And so far, we haven't seen that. It may have happened in, in secret, but we haven't seen it yet.
We'll, we'll make sure. We keep communicating. But thank you for coming, Dennis. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
One more comment from this young lady who's been waiting for hours.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Healy. I'm a Camden resident. I came tonight just to listen, but I thought I would speak for a few minutes. I think, I think one, one of the issues and several things that, that both Ken and Dennis brought up is the feeling in town, and I, and I know, it doesn't matter necessarily if you live in town, or you you certainly work in town, or perhaps, is knowing what people around you think and feel, whether they've been here for six years or 66 years. And I, and I, I have a sense of that from people. I'm involved in many different things. Lifelike, I work with Lifelike. I work with, I teach art history at Corey Hill. I know the young, the old, the sick. I work for the garden club. I talk to people all the time. I live two minutes up the street. I walk. I talk to people. And I know how people feel about Camden, whether they just rolled in, whether they're a visitor, or whether they've been here a long time. And unfortunately, people do feel that of the, Audrey mentioned tonight, 10 recommendations are options. I've, in reading the, the Interfluv Report, I've read three or four. Three seemed like to me made sense, or had some value to them. But it, it, it feels as though the option has already been chosen for us. And I know some of these things have already been stated. Whether that's correct or not, that's the feeling. People want to feel part of the process. And the people in town don't feel they're part of the process. They feel, you can sense it in Audrey's earnestness tonight. We've got to do this. We've got to get forward. We chose this option. We got this grant. And so let's go, let's go, let's go. And people, that is just fostering in this feeling of we're not a part of this. They're already, they're already moving on. They're already moving ahead of us. So, so however you want to. I wanted to start, I'm gonna back up a minute, to commend you when I came in tonight and just listened over the last hour and a half. You were very good at educating each other and informing each other about these different topics on the agenda before we got to this one. You really did it. You did a super job. But that's not, you need to now do that with the public. What you do so well together here, you need to do with the public. And you might, we've had enough Zoom calls, and we've had this or that. To hell with Zoom. We're all zoomed out.
I agree with that.
So you need to have people come and listen, and they can speak or not, and be nervous like I am, or they can, they can just ask, they want to feel part of the process. So if that takes more time, and if the grants, you know, the, the design and the this and that, the more you push on that, the more pushback you're gonna get. Unfortunately, that, that's just how people feel. And one other comment, and Dennis mentioned the, the non-quantitative piece of it. Everyone knows things cost money. Everyone knows that. But the, the, the water falls, there are issues with the dam and with the falls. But the, there is a piece of the heart and soul, and you're gonna hear that term, of, of the falls. I, I'd done a, a thing a few years ago here on the mill walk, and what that meant to Camden, and the mills, and the history, and the, the water. That heart and soul isn't gonna go away. I'll tell you two stories. Both of these happened in the last week, and I didn't have my pin on. These were, these were put together over three years ago, by the way. I didn't have my pin on. I just was listening and talking to people and.
He tells what the pin says, so they know.
It says, save the dam falls.
Okay.
Sorry. I usually don't swear. All right.
You didn't.
Anyway. But two of the things, one was a gentleman a week ago, he was sitting down next to the Fog Bell with his dog, which, if you don't know where the Fog Bell is, some people don't, but it's next to the falls. And he was sitting there, so I was working down there weeding and doing stuff, and he, I said, how are you doing today? He said, I'm terrific. I said, so you found a good spot in the shade? He said, yes, I did. And I said, so what else? He said, well, I'm sitting next to the falls, just the sound of it is heaven. And they're getting the mist off the falls, and the dogs cooled off. And I said, so you're gonna come back here again? I didn't know if he was a visitor or if he lived here. And he said, I come back here all the time. So that might seem frivolous and silly and all mushy, but you need to understand, some people go back to a place or a vacation or something, year after year after year, because of one really good memory that they have of a place. And there's a place down there, even though there's cars all over it now, and it looks like Walmart with the traffic. But that will change. But he said that, so he said that, I'll use the word earnestly again. He just was like, this is, this, I'm, this is a, this is a spot in heaven, sitting right here.
It is.
And that, that was pretty special. The other story, just this morning, I was up at Lifelike. There's a woman who's worked, worked there for a long, long time. And she said, you know what? She's from Spruce Head. She grew up there. Her parents, she said, my mom, when my sister and I were little, she used to drive us to Camden. That was like a big event, a big drive to come to Camden. And she said, as a treat, mom would take us to the Smiling Cow. And I said, so what's there? What, what was it about it? She said, my mom was doing shopping. We didn't care what she was buying. My sister and I would go to the back of the store and look out over the falls. She said, that is a memory I have as a little girl, is looking at the falls. And she said, she stills, is still, there's a back conference room up in the Lifelike building overlooking the falls. It, it's magnificent. But I just wanted to share those few things and.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You did a great job. I'd like to.
Can we just ask, I mean, there's a great opportunity here to, we're not, because we're, I think the falls mean sometimes different things to different people. And so I think we, it would be important for us to kind of dig in on, like, because I, I've spent thousands of hours videoing fish down there. And so I know, I kind of, I almost hate to admit sometimes the parts that I love about it. Over by the public landing, that spot there with the falls, you know, for some people, the falls is the part coming over on the public landing side by the bell. And for some, it is, they tend to emphasize, so I hear people tell me right now that, a couple people, that it looks terrible because all the water's going over to the public landing side, and we don't have the perfect cascade infinity pool effect in the, in the front. And so it's, you know, it's kind of like, other people say, oh, I don't mind that. I like the wild look, or, and then still other people say, I want to see just the, you know, the ledge, the water on the, on the ledge is the falls. And so I think this is, I really appreciate like how, how thoughtfully you're presenting this, because that, that is what we need to dig into more, is what do we want to preserve? Because if it's, if it's water falling like a falls over on the public landing side, there are different ways to accomplish that. In, in Kent, Ohio, they actually called it a dam restoration project, because they left a lot of the actual structure of the dam and used that as a way to recreate the water effect. And so I, I mean, I think that's exactly the type of input that we need. And just, just really quickly, I wanted to say that, like, I, I understand this, like, the decision has already been made thing, but it's, it's really hard to have a substantive conversation with the community about how to move forward when we can't present, you know, actual options. And so just to talk about, like, theoretically, do people want to remove the dam, or don't they? What I heard from a lot of people, and I've been listening to lots of people over many years on this, and some feel very comfortable sharing their upset feelings with me, too. And that's great, and I hope they continue to do that. But a lot of people said they, they needed to see images. They needed to see different options. They didn't know, they don't know what they support, because there were all these different variables. They want to know cost. They want to know grants. They want to know what it'll look like. And I just.
Well, isn't that your, your role to take that information, to present it? Not to dumb it down, because I don't think we need that, but to present the top three options. People feel as though in someone else's, that, that you've all become alewives' huggers because you got the grant. And it's kind of like, everybody likes alewives, but, but let's step back.
For fish, if it were all about the alewives, then a fish ladder would be a perfect solution.
I'm not, I'm not sure to make this conversation, because we're, we're about to tell this agenda, but to your point, no decision has been made. Until this board, three of the five of us, make a decision of what, if anything, to bring at whatever time period to the electorate. So I don't know why the, we may have been misconstrued, but no decision has been made. And if I can't make it any more clear than that. So with that, I want to let the select board make a final comment, because we need to move forward, and you haven't had a chance to talk.
I, I do want to make, I have some important things to say, but I am suffering from some personal sea level rise.
We will take a, we will take a, whatever break you want to call it, for three minutes.
60 seconds is fine. I will be right back.
I think it would be valuable if we, I, I appreciate your comment that no decision has been made, but to also outline clearly the next steps.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And reiterate them.
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Also for my own identification, because I'm a brand new member.
Remember, the purpose of the agenda item was principally, not solely, but to bring up, you talk to speed, because we're gonna be discussing this in our priority workshop, too, which we're gonna be scheduling, and hopefully in a few minutes.
To decide what the next, I mean.
And decide what, we have to decide what the next steps are. But, you know, logically, the, the next steps would be, where Audrey's already talked about the grant and what it can bring to us. But, but in parallel with that, at some point, probably not until into next year, logically, we will be having to look at the criterion we would like to see for the various options. And, yeah, not the least of which is money, but that's not, not in my mind the only option, or any of us. And then decide at some point of the, I don't know how many options there'll be. There could be 10. I don't know. But there could be three. But which one, if any, if any, we think should be brought to the, to the electorate? And, and by the way, in that process, we are required to have public hearings on the various discussions and the various elements, I'm repeating myself a little bit here, about, you know, where we go. But again, but this is quite a bit of time. It's gonna go between now and whenever that occurs. We would honestly be fortunate to get this on the June ballot next year, if at all.
Well, and I, I just want to bring us back to the task at hand. I really, I need, like, I really need some, you know, direction from you all on, on how we sort of move this part forward.
Right.
And, you know, I think that, you know, all of you, your job is very much constantly
Yep.
interacting with the community and kind of getting an idea of, you know, how are we best going to get, you know, input into this stage of this particular project that we have in front of us, which is a design based on the scenario we've talked about.
Right.
And so, yeah, I just really want to get feedback from the board. Like, I threw out suggestions, but you're all much better placed to say, you know, how are we gonna successfully do that than I am?
I think we said that, Audrey, and when we said that we want to have this designs, as it develops, brought to the board on a.
But I guess, like, I need some.
We need to meet with the Library Board of Trustees. I feel like, I think that's what needs to.
Yeah, and also, I, I really appreciate Dennis, your comment on conceptual designs and not getting in the nitty-gritty in the weeds. I think that that was a very helpful suggestion, because I think that can help us, you know, garner more feedback from the community, whether, you know, this is, option A is, is something they're sensitive to. And Jennifer, thank you so much for your testimony as well, because it, it does resonate with me. And I, I really, so I appreciate the comments. I think we should get different designs. I think we should find a way to have maybe more dynamic exchange with the members of the community, especially those who are interested in this topic. And especially those who feel that a decision has already been made, when it's actually not the case. So I have a few ideas, but I.
Yeah, and I guess I want to be pretty specific, because I feel like if we keep talking about this kind of vaguely, maybe I won't get you all to where I need you to, you know, giving me, you know, input on how we're gonna do this. So what we're doing, I really need, basically, all of you to pick a conceptual design that we're going to move forward with to engineering stage. That's exactly what I need right now.
How, how many conceptual designs do we have?
Three.
We've got, I mean, there's a bunch of.
I mean, I get that, Audrey, but like, the. I mean, I get that, Audra, but, like, the, the, this was supposed to be a very base template, because a lot of people at the beginning weren't even understanding, like, where the river would go, if the dam went out, and where the dam actually is. And so you have to start there. This, this, like, conceptual design doesn't incorporate anything with, like, a seawall, or, there are two, you know, these basic two options were more, you know, one was supposed to be just take the dam out and let the river run wild, which would likely, what we know about that area, is that it has, it was always a falls, that's why they put the dam there to begin with. And so they believe that when taking the dam out, it will, will have the falls, that we won't know exactly what it'll look like, but it might not be the easiest for fish to get up. It'll be quite, it could be quite difficult. And so there might be some need to do, you know, depending on priorities, there could be some engineered fish passage. And so that was one of the decisions we kind of needed to make, is do they, do we want to pursue a more wild, like, just let it flow and see what happens, or do we want to try to engineer the fish passage? But I don't, I don't think any of these, as they are, are ready to go for the board to say, I mean, we, we need some broad direction of, like, do we want some other elements worked in? Do we want, you know, something, you know, like, do we want to try to look at a, at a recirculating waterfall, or not, might be?
You're laying too many options on the table, you're making it confusing. I think maybe we have to do is bring Interfluv in and, and have them recommend what they need to have immediately, what they need to have to proceed forward, and that's the direction we go, because this is not the format for it now. We're going around a little bit.
No, and I'm, and I mean, I'm not asking any, by any means, for anyone to make any sort of, it's more of trying to explain what I need, so we can decide what's the, what's the kind of format of how we get there with all of you.
Interfluv in here on August 10th.
Well.
And move forward, but we have to, we have.
Well, why, I mean, why don't just sit down with the Library Board of Trustees?
Well, that's a good point.
And then, we sit down with them and say, you know, and they're varying, just like with us, there are varying levels of interest. And some people are going to say, yeah, let's sit down with a bunch of different pictures and figure it out, and then we'll direct Interfluv to come up with the best that we can. The thing is, is this is, a lot of the time, grants like this would go through their whole design phase without so much public input. But what we've done is we've decided to say, let's get as much public input as we possibly can for this phase, when usually that would just come later. We're just, it's, there's a lot that needed to be done, aside from design, like the, like figuring out where the ledge is, and all of the, like, detailed engineering.
Getting all the bathymetric data.
Majority of the work is.
I think we need, unfortunately, I think the scheduling, we'll get to in a second with the Library Board, could be a bit of a challenge early on because of their schedules. But I think that is important to have that meeting first, and then with some criterion, hopefully between the two entities, we can have a discussion then with Interfluv.
Right. They have a subcommittee, too, that they came up with.
They do, they do, we can work with both. But I think we need to get that moving ASAP, to answer your question directly, Audra. But I agree with you, there's too many, there's too many, that's what was the objective that failed in discussions with the public on those, in information sessions, to get some of that feeling. It's, for lots of reasons, the attendance was quite low.
I got a lot of feedback after the fact privately.
Right, okay, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop here for a second, because we need to go with other items. And the intent here was for you to give us, I'm going to take your remark.
Well, and I'm, I'm wondering if.
I'll ask, I'll ask, that's why I want to focus on their comments, because the three of us have talked enough. But I, and I shouldn't say it that way, but, but I think, you know, you, you brought this to the attention of the two new board members, and is this granted, exists, it has a trigger date, and we don't have all the time in the world to play with it. Mr. Adner?
Thank you, thank you. Well, I think the important part here is, Jennifer, you're talking about education and getting a feel for the town. And I think one of the things that concerns me is, there hasn't been proper education out to people about what this is about, at least in my mind, the way I feel about it. And it's interesting, I made a lighthearted remark about, you know, if we're talking about investment properties, some other people in the board are way better prepared for talking about investments than I am, because that's not my area of expertise. One of my areas of expertise is, for 20-plus years, I did search and rescue work with LA County Sheriff's Department. One of my certifications is Swiftwater Rescue. I recently have helped found coastal mountain search and rescue here in town. I was out two Fridays ago, in the midst of the storm from Elsa, searching for a missing person. I've never been so wet in my life. It was interesting. But I, I look at this, and I look at the whole situation, the dam, and I appreciate, I know that some people love the waterfall, love the seawall, I know that some people are, you know, I know that the watershed school is really interested in the fish and what's going to happen there. I know that Audra's concerned about, you know, importantly, and concerned about the, the work that the employees have to do. And as much as I understand and I appreciate all those things, those are not my concerns. My concerns are, we have, our emergency operations center is in the congregational church in this town, which seems like a weird place for it, except that our public safety building is in a flood zone. It can't, they're not legally allowed to have our emergency operations center there. And as much as we love the waterfall and stuff like that, it's an artificial, man-made building, and so is the seawall, and it, it doesn't fit the natural flow of the water. One of the things I think that is important is, I came upon a quote a while back, that said, understand the difference between fact and feeling. And a lot of people feel how important, you know, those things are really important, and that the seawall is great and stuff like that, but the science, I think, is really dangerous to feel that way. Because one of the things I've been involved with is looking at what happens with water. One of the things I've been studying recently, to look at what could happen in this town, is I've been studying the effects of Hurricane Irene, which came in 2011. It was about, it was about a year before Sandy. And so a lot of people don't remember it, you know, nationwide. Sandy is the one that had the big effects on the East Coast. But Hurricane Irene was, and I'm reading from Inside Climate News, which is a Pulitzer Prize-winning, nonpartisan reporting on, on climate situations, and talking about what happened in Vermont. And this happened in New Hampshire as well, but this is what happened in Vermont. And Irene was actually only a hurricane for a brief stretch over distant North Carolina. Its winds dwindled once it made landfall. But while winds and storm surge make hurricanes so telegenic, what made this so destructive was rain. Irene dumped as much as 11 inches of rain on parts of Vermont, and caused $733 million in damage in all, in Vermont. In all, it checked in at $14.3 billion in damages, the sixth costliest hurricane in American history. And it's interesting, as it turns out, Vermont wasn't that unlikely a candidate for all that damage, and residents of the Green Mountain State crisscrossed by rivers and streams, have a lot to worry about in the future. And I'm just reading pieces of this, I'll, I'll give this link to Audra, so they can put it up on the website, so people can read this, because I think it's really important. Hurricanes and northeasters of the future will be even wetter because warmer air in the atmosphere holds more water, climate scientists say. Vermont's vulnerability to flooding was the harsh reality Irene drove home in 2011. More than 2,400 roads, 800 homes and businesses, 300 bridges, including historic covered bridges, and a half a dozen railroad lines were destroyed or damaged. After Irene swept through, Vermont said about understanding the devastation, working towards resilience. They passed all sorts of things, they're doing lots of things to make a difference. They've rebuilt roads to deal with future floods, the state's largest utility is working towards decentralizing its grid. Most importantly, the science has been integrated into policy. There's been this alignment of incentives from municipalities to be responsible for this larger purpose. It's in the statute now that the state plans and municipal plans need to address flood resilience and river corridor protection. One of the main takeaways from Irene is that development changed the landscape around rivers. By making them straighter and easier to build around, it meant that heavy rains turned them from placid waterways into shoots of destruction. It is clear to us that flooding is not just about water rising, it's the power of water that's causing the damage to roads, bridges, and culverts. When water breached river channels during Irene, it behaved like water from a fire hose, not just flooding homes, but sweeping them away. It created damage along corridors never identified by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. A third of the municipalities haven't yet adopted a local hazard migration, mitigation plan. Businesses are still shuttering, finding that after five years after Irene, they weren't able to fully recover. The last comment from the article, Irene, Irene should be a reminder that a lot of mortality from tropical storms comes from rain. And that's the thing that concerns me, is the dam holds water in. And I'm not concerned about sea level rise, because that's a different issue, that's water coming in. What's going to happen if we have, if Irene had not curved west at the last minute, and hit Vermont and New Hampshire, and had come close to us, and flooded McGuntecook Lake and the river like that, we would have no Smiling Cow, we would have no House of Logan, we would have no Camden Deli. They would be gone. So would maybe our public safety building. That's the concern for me here. Seeing and working with Swiftwater, what's happened before, this is not about fish. You know, the fish is great, there's, I was in the harbor, I was in the harbor today, there's a ton of fish in the harbor, which is great, maybe, and it's beautiful and terrific like that. That's about saving our town. If that storm had hit here, it would have destroyed Route 1, it would have destroyed those businesses, and who knows the, the long-term effects of this town. That's what I'm concerned about. That's my concern about the dam. That's why the scientists are recommending removing it, because it could kill this town. And people are not taking that seriously, because they're not educated about that. And I think that's really important. Saying, yes, it's beautiful, yes, it's great, but if, if you make a decision about, do you want to see beautiful for another couple of years, or 10 years, or 20 years, or do you want to save the town? I'd rather save the town and have a little different pattern there, because it will make a difference. You know, do the research, look at what happens with, with Swiftwater, because that's the dangerous issue here.
And even more recently, look at what happened in Germany. It's, it's exactly the scenario.
Austrian, Belgian.
It's happening worldwide.
That's why we qualify for these grants, that's why the federal government is giving us money, because we, we meet every single criteria.
I want to close this out with any comments from, Matt, given a chance to speak, would you like to say anything?
Good, thank you.
What, you're good? Sophie, you made a few comments, you want to make any more?
No, I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and, you know, I agree, but anything, any recommendations for getting more effective, accurate information to the public? We're rarely listening, because that's the intent of what we've been trying to do, and some of it's failed. We ain't over, we got time, we have time to do communication, that's a good thing. We're not, we don't have a, not trying, so we're not trying to make a November election, good luck with that. But anyway, thank you all.
I mean, this is a good time to say, all of our, all of our meetings have been archived and recorded, they're all available. We did three community conversations about the broader watershed study, and then three about Montgomery Dam, so.
One last comment.
The last comment, the other thing that I love, and I've been in the, select, I'm the longest current serving member, there's nothing I like more than reading in the paper or somewhere else, that the select board has made a decision that we have never discussed. We have never discussed this issue as a board, not this board, not the previous board, we haven't made any decisions, because we've never discussed it as a board. And I really take offense that people lump us all together and say, well, they've made this decision when we've never discussed it.
That's correct.
They made a decision to apply for a grant.
Right, that's correct. Onward and upward, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming, no more conversations at this point in time. I'm going to take us forward into the, and Audrey, you wanted to discuss the gate situation, which we've already discussed, it's got some challenges to it, and not for an action here, but to make us aware of the challenges there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't think I need to belabor the point, I think everybody understands from the last discussion, the amount of, sort of, manual manipulate, or constant manipulation of the gate. And, you know, I think that having some sort of policy on leaving it open, leaving it closed, the times when we'll open it and do a drawdown, the times when we close it and let the impoundment fill, just something like that. So, you know, I, I guess I'm angling towards leaving it open more often, so David Bolstrich isn't constantly having to check and close and open and.
How do you recommend we proceed with making such a policy, just to, does he have another discussion on it?
Well, since it's a discussion, I thought if you were amenable to that idea, I would sort of work with Dave, and we would come up with something and bring it back to all of you.
Yep, that would be great.
That would be great. Good night, Ken, thank you.
I mean, because it's in terms of, like, fairness to wastewater customers and stuff, too, and we're looking at things that might be getting lumped in. And if we're not doing a really good job actually quantifying the time that he's spending, then we're actually, wastewater customers are subsidizing the management of the Montgomery Dam, which probably wasn't anybody's intention.
That's something that I've thought about a lot, you know, how, how hand to the heart can we say that?
That's, I'm feeling and sensing, unless everyone disagrees, that we should do exactly that. Tom, can I come back with a recommendation?
Yes.
What you think is the smartest, safest, most cost-effective approach?
Right, and I, and I guess, like, I'm, I'm talking about this one specifically, because all the other ones that we manage, that's actual real, you know, lake, lake, and it's Seabright Pond levels, and, you know, that's.
I wanted to mention to that effect, today, I've not seen Lake McGuntecook as high as it is, as is today.
Yeah, it came up a lot.
Really. I want to hit the air conditioning button back there, Audra. With that, we're going to move on to the last, last item on this group, which is basically.
Are you saying that because I got a little hot?
I don't know, yeah, you're sitting, sitting next to Mark, sometimes it happens to the best of us.
It really does.
It's all the climate change.
You get fired up about climate change issues.
We have, I told the next item, we talked with the Library Board Trustees, and what I suggested, we've suggested as a joint meeting between the trustees and us, and what we have to do here is pick a couple of dates, and I'm not, maybe even times, because, you know, they're not all, they don't have, they don't have a trustee meeting until the end of August.
Do you want to try and lump it in with a select board meeting? Like, maybe, or like, before a select board meeting?
I think it should be a focused, or, meeting with its own agenda, because, especially the first one. I think we might lump them in when we have some design things to look at. But I think, as I, I had discussed it with them, what's suggested, was they have certain goals and objectives, and we should do the same thing, develop our own goals and objectives, RE, this whole Montgomery Dam project thing. And just, you know, what we're trying to achieve, and then compare notes, and come to consensus on how the best to work together, and including, you know, who's involved, you said there's a committee involved, and.
Well, then we have a, we might be able to say to them, you know, if you want to just use the subcommittee to do it, or, I mean, maybe it's.
That's their decision.
Whoever of us wants to do it, and we can't, trying to get a full, everybody is definitely there meeting, it might be more important that, like, you know, whoever their representatives are, that they want.
Yeah, I think principally is to get in front, that there's 12 of them, I think, or 11, I forget which, 11 probably. And there's, you know, six of us, at least, and get them in, us in the same room to open up communication, because I don't want to hear, we don't want to hear any more miscommunication about what decisions have been made, what's not been made, what we're trying to do, and how, and have a candid meeting with them. So I just, I mean, I'm open to options, but I suggest we just pick two days in August. You know, Mark has some travel plans, big time in August, but probably, we want to, we want to have a priorities meeting first.
Yes.
That's important, which we'll schedule in a minute. And this is probably the latter half of August with them. A couple of dates then would be good to have.
Okay, just to let everybody know, we're taking a once-in-a-lifetime family trip. I will be gone from the 14th through the 22nd. Let's just be 14th through the 29th.
Are you open to participating via Zoom during that time?
The 24th, I can, I can, I'll be able to participate from where we're staying on the 25th by Zoom. Before that, there's not really a good way to participate from a tent at Yellowstone National Park.
Yeah, okay.
Ooh, fun.
Not a great place to communicate from. What I would suggest is, we pick one, one date for, as Mark can't make it, but August 17th, which is a Tuesday.
Can I walk you back one step? What about Interfluv and Mike Burgess, and where that is in terms of this process?
Mike Burke?
Burke, sorry.
They're just waiting on more design info from us, they've got.
Yeah, I think that's an appropriate time.
I mean, I hate to do this, but that feels too late to me, yeah.
August 17th is too late.
Okay, well...
Do we schedule our priorities workshop yet?
We haven't done that yet.
Maybe we should do that first.
Maybe we should first, yeah. Let's schedule the priorities workshop first. Priorities workshop, I was going to suggest for August 3rd.
What about next week, the 27th?
The August 3rd is the anniversary of my sister's death, and my parents need to, like, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be like...
No, that's... It has to be a Tuesday?
No.
No, okay.
The 20th, Mark, you're suggesting the 27th?
Twenty, that week is, you know, we don't have a meeting next week, so it's a pretty...
That's correct. I think Audra's on vacation.
No, don't worry about me.
Okay.
We're not going to, we're not going to use her as an excuse not to move forward.
I mean, I can't even, like, properly communicate how stressed out I am by not meeting this grant deadline, because this is our third extension.
Oh, well, I mean, it's actually made a lot of...
So what, what time would you say, on the 27th?
I was going to say, what time of day works best for on the 27th of August for...
Oh, of August? I thought Audra was...
No, no, July, July.
I'm sorry, I got it wrong. July 27th.
Next Tuesday, weekend tonight.
Afternoon?
Afternoon's fine.
Oh, yeah, afternoon, yeah.
What time?
After four.
Oh, well, that's tough for me.
Tough for the kids.
28, 29.
28, 29, yeah.
Well, Mason can come.
28.
Well, depends on time of day.
Anytime after one.
This is probably going to be an hour and a half minimum meeting.
That works.
28th at 1 o'clock?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Cool.
All right. So that's 7:28 at 1:00 PM. And again, there will be an agenda and all that kind of thing. But we'll probably plan on at least an hour and a half. And we should keep a clock on it, but, because of a lot of stuff to discuss. But anyway, okay, that's it. So if we have the meeting in July, into July, then we can talk to, looking to the, I don't, as far as the board goes, the feeling I got from Nikki was, you know, earlier in the month, it's not going to work. Now, that, we can, we can, we can propose a date. Doesn't mean we shouldn't propose a date. I suggest we have two dates in August.
Also, the, one of the central questions we need to answer is, is how essential is it that everybody participates in this phase? How does everybody want to, I mean, are we creating a, by sending something to the library board of trustees, saying, we want as many of you there as possible? Is that the overall goal? Or should it be?
We can't make decisions with the library board. If they want to, some of them don't want to attend, our invitation should be the entire board.
But why, if we...
But why not?
Because, I mean, if you make me have a, go to a meeting about EMS and the future of all of that, and it's like really important that, you know, I don't know if that's the best outcome for anybody. So I think by, they chose a subcommittee. I think we should, it should be the interested party. It should be however...
The library...
It should, it should be their decision.
Right.
Exactly.
Who they send is their decision.
Send a message that we like want your, you know, it's important to us that your whole board be there. I don't, I think whatever is...
I don't think anybody ever said that. Nikki was suggesting, she suggested the whole board. I didn't. So I'm just putting out some dates for wherever they want to come to the meeting, and wherever we want to come to the meeting, from our side, to sit down and talk to each other. And that's their decision.
So Tuesday the 3rd?
Tuesday, that's, we're going to be too early for them. All right. You know what we'll do? Let's, let's, let's pick a date.
3rd is not, I can't do that. It just, I'm going to...
No, she can't.
Sorry, you said that. Wednesday the 4th?
Sure. Let's, one date would be 8:04 at...
You know, and we really are going to have to do a couple, like, we have to start talking to them more. So if we just low pressure, like, we'll do a few.
Well, the first, first we get the first one. I told Nikki, we would give her a couple of dates that we would try, we would try to be available, and then she can talk to the board, wherever they want to talk to. So 8:04 at August 4th.
That was my son's seminar.
At 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, that was fine.
Second date.
We need an hour?
Later in the month. What?
An hour? Hour and a half?
Yeah.
That was 1:00 PM on the 4th?
Yeah, correct. Then we would look at, wow. I think their meeting is like the 26th on a Thursday.
30th, 31st?
Um...
I, I think there's, there's urgency here to...
25th.
Why did we just skip from right from the 4th to the 25th?
I don't know. There's no reason.
25th, I could do, I could participate.
Why, why didn't we, why didn't we look at like the, the 5th and the 6th?
The 9th and the 10th, yeah, 9th and 10th are...
Oh, no, they, logically, if they want something later in the month, that's what she stated, in the last half of the month. So we should, we don't have to. Give me any dates.
We just, I see, I mean, I've talked to some, a bunch of library trustee members too. I mean, it's a different story from everybody. Some say...
So, and some of the library trustees are on the long cruise.
What?
The long cruise. That starts on the 11th, the 11th and the 23rd.
It is.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Give them a bunch of dates. And because who knows, maybe the 4th doesn't work for a bunch of them. So we should, if the 5th, or the 7th, or the...
8:04 and 8...
I can meet on the weekend, too.
8:05 at 1 o'clock. 8:04 and 5, at 1 o'clock. And then that would do.
And the 5th as well.
Um, I...
8:04 and 5th, yeah.
We're going to come back to us with your recommendations. Let's not stretch this too far. Let's, you know...
This is my least favorite part of being on the select board right here.
And then I would suggest 8:18, unless you think it's too late, Audra.
That's good. I don't have to do it.
I could, I mean, what's the, what's...
I'd suggest 8 and 8, 8, 9 and 10 as well.
I mean, we already got Mark. Mark just wants it not to flood. So that's what...
All right. I can, I'll give you, any dates, if you want to do it earlier, I just...
The 8th? Is that what you said?
No, the 8th is a Sunday.
Oh, well, I mean...
The 10 is on Monday, 9, Monday 9, Tuesday 10, Tuesday 10?
No, I don't want to do it the same way.
The 10th is a select board, so...
Oh, it's a, right.
Um, 8...
The 11th?
Need the whole day to...
8, 9, 8, 9 at 1 o'clock, or 8:11?
8, 9, 1 o'clock.
8:11 at 1 o'clock. Those are the four days we'll throw out there, and see what they come back with.
8, 9, I can do 1:30.
What?
1:30.
8, 9, 1:30?
Yep.
All the other ones are 1 o'clock?
Yep.
All right, good. I'll throw the, add them and see what they come back with.
Okay, hold on. So we have the 4th and the 5th, and the...
1 o'clock, 9th at 1:30, 11th at 1.
Okay.
Yep, okay. Cool. Updates we have, we did, we did that. This is a discussion about this conference room and the hybrid room improvements. You know, we've, we've, what, Juniper?
Juniper's been waiting all this time.
I know you're here. I see you there. Audra, I know, we've been going around in circles with this thing a little bit. Fundamentally, the board, at least when we last discussed this, was one of the things, we can, there's kind of two projects going in parallel, potentially. One is the AV, and one is the physical. And they should be separated, I think, in our discussions. You know, because you try to put this whole thing together, it gets to be something that's going to not get done. We have a priority to get the AV part done professionally, no, it's well done, period, however it's done, to get it well done so we have a good hybrid model that will work ASAP. That was clear from all of us, right? And now the question is, what's the fastest and bestest way to get that on a fast track?
Well, I got to say, I'd love to pick Matt's brain about all this. Because when we last talked about this, Matt wasn't here. And given all of his...
Expertise.
Expertise and background.
And I can also share my husband.
Oh.
Yeah, he's...
Share your husband. Why don't you...
Just with Audra.
Oh, okay.
Just with Audra. You, you'll have to...
Recommendations.
In which context?
Context of getting this project done correctly and effectively, bringing in all the key elements to it. So we get it done right. Based on your experience.
Have you read through?
I just saw Noah's proposal. I'm in the prices are good, the equipment makes sense. It just depends on the scale. And you have to figure out, again, we talked about the overall design of the room, and what you're looking for. I mean, I just sat in here for the first time, and I can already see, you know, you have an articulating hanging screen right there, that's on an arm that you can articulate, and you have a cart right there.
Right.
So that's the 75 inch, that's the 55 inch on a cart, you know? I don't know what's going to happen to the back. But again, you know, we can kind of, kind of bang this thing out. But you have to figure out what the, what you're really looking for. What are the criteria?
Criteria, the criteria.
Right. And the flexibility of being able to use the room for...
How it operates, what it does, to, how, and be on the same page in that regard. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we never have done. We have never written out our criteria of...
That's why I'm hitting on the guy who's done it before. Because he knows that the definition of the criteria is crucial. And it, you know, should be whoever's input, I'm not an expert here, but whoever's input in that criteria, so that we can take that criteria and discuss it with our consultant to make sure we're on the same page and get it done.
Can we do it right now?
No. I mean, we have agreed, before we agreed on a process, we made a committee of people that were supposed to be consulted. There was a whole, there was a whole thing, and nobody ever got in touch with me about it. I just don't, what, what happened before is, I feel like we're putting Juniper in this difficult position of, she's just supposed to magically absorb what our goals are, articulate them to Noah. And then what happened before is, we got something back, and there were things like, well, we didn't like this, or we didn't like that. And that had never been properly communicated. And so if we could just maybe even assign it to, it ends up being...
You know what? I agree with you 100%. I agree. But I think we need, is, this, you know, I've been, I was the one originally reticent in the house, convinced me we needed to do the webinar thing. And it worked. It was great. I mean, we...
And it was months of fighting.
You get to, no, fighting, but arm wrestling. But, but I think, you know, I'd love to do it right now. But you know what? It's getting late. I'm tired. What I'd like to suggest is, because Matt, if you could pull together this criterion with input from...
I mean, it's just kind of funny that, I mean, Matt just got on the, he might be, he might be a total production expert, but the, the needs at a select board meeting are not, those two things are not exactly the same. We do need to...
No, I think we can, we can start off, I started one, but I wrote a month ago, which wasn't very good. Update that, give them a starting point for how, how this thing is perceived by the board to work. All right? Which means, I think I could even write that, to tell you the truth. Because I've heard enough about, you know, what we want to do with Zoom, or whatever it might be, and how we want to project, and how we want to be able to get these screens to show what's going on, and everybody in the world can hear it.
If I, if I can be honest, because I hear, I hear probably input from...
All of us.
All of you. And, I mean, Matt and Sophie haven't weighed in on this one yet, but the three of you who are here, I hear different things from all three of you.
That's why we got it.
That's why it's been so... I just said, I want to put Bob in, here the same, because I, it's so different.
So difficult.
Can I, I just...
Why don't we just assign Matt and I to work it out with Juniper and Noah?
I, I, that's where, but first of all, first, no, no, I don't want to be involved. I just think, as a select board, the select board should agree on how this operates. And you know, I think that, that's where we, I think it was a flaw in the ointment in trying to grab a couple of us to, to do it ad hoc and get it done. I admit I'm not an expert, but I would like to know how it's going to operate. Because, you know, we're going to be all involved in that. And that's Matt's, what he calls, criteria, design criteria. Right?
I feel like, I've been, I don't know why I'm not allowed to participate in any of this. Because everybody's totally comfortable asking me for help to, to fix the whole system when it doesn't work, to log in, to make it work, all of that. But then, when it comes to actually figuring out what we're going to do, I don't, I just feel like, you guys all said I could be on the committee, and then everybody just intentionally excluded me. I don't understand.
I, I don't...
I mean, we don't, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just a little tired. I don't really mean all this stuff.
I feel for you. I feel the same way. But I don't care who generates this criterion. You know, by the way, I don't care if we need three mouses in there, or two apples, and whatever the heck to make it work. I ain't going there. I just know that when you all come up with a criterion, I want to be able to ensure that I, and the criteria to me is how the room operates. That's it. If you say, you collectively say, board, where it's going to operate, there's going to be two screens, and they're going to show everything that's on, from the Zoom participants to the laptops, that's all I care about. And I think the rest of the board should care about that, too.
I just want to add one thing. Can we get the Regal Theater seats where we go back for the popcorn? And, you know, we have footrests. If we can get that, then I'm happy.
Let's vote right now that it's okay to get rid of the dais if we need to.
All right.
Yes, a yes or no?
No, wait, wait. I said, you don't, you're making this way...
I just thought that would be funny.
You're making this way too complicated.
It's not that complicated. We can come up with designs pretty...
Physical aspects of the room are, we're going to be presenting from here. That's what makes, but there's a dais and not's irrelevant. And we're going to see things and operate things. We need, in my opinion, and obviously I feel strongly about it, this, the renovations, to lighting, to, to seating, really belongs in a professional interior architect to comment, tell us what our options are. And spend a few dollars to do it right.
So, yes, and I, I do think that the two go together, actually. They do. Thank you. Because, because the lighting is, and the cameras, and where you are, and they do work together. So I, I'm, I'm sorry to contradict you. This is not my...
That's fine. That's fine. Sophie, the only reason I was trying to separate to get it done faster.
I, I totally understand, but...
That's the only reason.
I, I think they need to talk to each other, those two pieces.
Yeah, they do.
It has to be coherent.
That's fine.
Matters like where we put the outlets and stuff.
We, does anybody disagree that we need an explanation that's readable by us neophytes, how this room is going to operate? When I'm sitting here, how is it going to operate? You can explain that.
What our goals are, or, what do you mean, how it's going to, like, a manual, or...
Look, I just want to know that from this computer, if I want to put something up on that screen, I can do it. You know, or if I, if we're controlling the participants in a webinar, or attendees, that we can bring up, and they're going to display on the screen, and all of this is going to work, so the whole world sees it through YouTube, or whatever the medium is, and it can hear it effectively. That's what I mean by how it works. That's it. That's all there is to it. I don't want to be surprised by the fact that, I, I'm going to make an exaggeration here, because I like doing that. And they find out that I project stuff, it's going to go here? Uh-uh, that ain't going to work. I'm not turning my back anymore on this stuff. This is terrible.
Makes you busy after a while.
That's why I say, that's why I say, at least we know whether this is the dais or not, we're operating from this end of the room. Okay? Whether the lights need to be changed, and I agree with you, Sophie, I think it should be all one package. But I'm, I'm just concerned about schedule, that's all.
I, I totally understand.
That's it. So...
So what's our resolution?
There's a lot of faith in Matt, so why don't we just delegate some stuff? And then if you let me be involved, too, then I'll be really happy. And...
Absolutely. I think you two have, and Juniper...
And Bruce, I mean, Bruce does, like...
But Matt, how long do you think it would take for you all to develop this criterion, and how the room's going to operate?
About 15 minutes.
Thank you.
I mean, there's a little bit more to it. Wait till you hear all the backstory of the things that are important or not important. Bob and his whiteboard, and Audra hates, Audra hates anything on wheels, and...
Well, it's all going to be on wheels, and on articulating arms.
Matt, you haven't had enough phone conversations with Allison.
Yes, Allison and I will talk. Hey, I don't mean to tease, but Juniper and Audra, you know, Noah, the packet that's in here, the gear is well priced, the, what he's proposing he's proposing is solid, it's just, we need to figure out, again, it's, is it what we need? I mean, that's a pretty serious cabinet and a pretty serious control panel, on wheels, which I do like, actually, you want to move around, but I don't know, I'm, I'm new, so hi, Juniper, I mean, when I see that control panel and, you know, full suite back there, who's going to operate that thing?
Yeah.
Who's going to be there, I mean, it's, it's, not me, I'm not operating, and I'm here, I'm now a whiteboard member.
For Zoom. It just worked, everything worked.
So there, so we want to look, again, as part of it is not just having the, you know, the, you want to also understand, you know, in terms of its complexity, you know, I mean, are we going, I, I think Noah's, you know, what I'm seeing, he's not overcharging you, you know, that was my big concern, is that he was going to rape and pillage, but I look at that, I go, you know, it's kind of just charging retail prices, he's got his little, you know, 20% markup and everything, big deal.
So what you're saying is you want to make sure that Bob can operate it?
Well, again, I wouldn't want to know.
Because that's the issue with the last system.
We all want to, we all want to figure out, you know, the action, that's why, you know, Juniper, you know, who operates this thing? Is that going to be Bob, you know, and at 2:00 in the morning coming in and turning all this stuff on?
Oh, yeah, definitely, I just want to touch on this concept that seems so distressing, Allison, and that this proposal is, uh, it was sort of like a price sheet of like, if this is, if we were to do, what would that look like? And so at a point, you know, Noah and I discussed a desk, and he said that would be expensive, and I said, okay, we'll take a table, and then I thought about it, and I was like, if we're going to renovate, what would a desk cost? That's sort of the question, so that's why it's on the proposal, because these are the questions that are like, what if we did this, what would that cost?
Sure.
What if we put a 75-inch TV on a rolling stand, what would that cost? What if we had HDMI outputs on both sides of the wall with power and signal and sound and all of those? What would that cost? And that's what this proposal is for, is to gather information, and so I have gone through the entire proposal, and I can explain how each thing works, what they're for, and it is accompanied with questions of decisions that you guys need to make, and this is where the committee meetings are going to be exceptionally important, where we get together and say, we need to establish the questions, do we put the TV on this wall, that wall, or a stand? So that we're not doing that conversation here, knowing full well, having seen a proposal, what the consequences of that decision would be, whether it would be this cost, this cost, or this cost. And so that's why I'm here, is to like, I, I absolutely want to meet and have a discussion. Having gathered this much information to date, this gives us something to start from, because if you say, I mean, I know I've heard so clearly, without any doubt, Bob does not want to turn around to see the presentation, we're not going to put together a proposal that doesn't have an option for Bob to see the content in front of him. The request for Zoom and for Allison to be able to control it at her location is like, clear, I heard you, Allison, you said.
But it's just not written anywhere, so we don't, we need to, that's what, that's why I say I feel bad for you, that I feel like that what you've heard a lot has been like advocacy that's happened in moments of frustration, and that we haven't gone through the process of forcing, you know, each of us to write down what's important, and then have that in a document, and then we move.
I mean, if that's how it makes you feel good, that's great, like, if that's what you need to make yourself feel comfortable, if you would like to hear what I'm proposing and you say this works for me, this doesn't, then that seems like another direction that you could work.
I think, I think two things have to go in barrel, one is you, to your point, and we're all saying the same thing, we have to have, well, at some, just an explanation of how the system's going to work so that we all understand it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, whether you decide to put a, a TV on stand or, go for it, you know, those, we, we can't design this by committee.
I mean, we already did an expensive upgrade in this room, and there were many, I think a lot of that is, there were many problems, it failed many times, there were many times when people said, the YouTube went out again, the YouTube, it's gone out, and so that was, and that was engineered by the same company through the same, kind of a similar process, and then what we heard later on was that, oh, well, this wasn't explained or this wasn't explained, so it would be.
Yeah, but, again, it would be great, I, I don't know, I don't know the backstory, so I would love to sit down with whoever decides, you know, find me anytime, and hi, Juniper.
Hi, Matt, nice to meet you.
Always nice to see you, so let's sit down and go through what's working and what's not working now, what your priorities are in terms of what the needs of the room are, and truly, this is not brain surgery.
I didn't think so.
It works fine at my church, I mean.
Yeah, it works fine, I mean, pretty much every, any institution, you know, I mean, this is what, any business, bigger and smaller, if they have a conference room, that you're designing a conference room, that works.
I just have one comment, I had expressed some.
Frustration.
Frustration when, and people say, well, we don't need the dais, we're going to get these desks, rid of these desks. My, my concern about it was, is, and I went up to John French about it, there's a history here, we've been about historic preservation.
We're leaving those, the dam can go, but the dais stays.
We'll develop a listing session.
I'm serious, and there is, there's a history here, John says it totally predates him, and I'm just interested in, before we decide to totally junk something, is to go, wait a minute, are we not preserving, you can laugh about it, seeing you be so concerned about this.
I don't want them to go to the landfill, I do not want them to go to the landfill. And I actually like them, too, and I was giving in to Audra when I, I realized that I was being too rigid, and I said, you know what, if, if this will make things easier for Audra and we can move things around, I can let go of my need to be hidden behind the dais, so it's.
I think there's a history and, you know, something here that we don't need to hurry to get rid of.
Let's set a date to get together, I, I know they want to banter, but dinner, so yes.
But also, let's set a date by which we are sending to you what.
Hopes and dreams.
But it's not, it's, it's the use, again, it's the utility, what, how is the room going to be configured? I mean, so, we've done these designs in other companies, so whether it's a motion picture or.
It seems to me the board can decide, has decided that the room's going to operate, not with the, I'm not talking about the desk and table, but this is the position we're in, that's the rest of the world, and as this will be for planning board and for us, of course, standing other boards.
So, and I would throw out to you, so there's, you know, when SIF is in town, would you want to lease this room out to have a different purpose?
Well, I used to have to get into the options of portability of dais's or not, because that's very easily done.
Wheels, maybe we could put them all on wheels.
Yeah, you actually can, because there are dais's that are made of lightweight metal, they can be moved out by me.
You mean a different dais?
No, it's, I'm going to raise platform, these are heavy as heck, I would not want to have anybody lift these out.
Hold on, is the dais, I am not, maybe confused, this isn't the dais, this is.
This is the dais.
What's under your feet is the dais.
Yes, that's the dais.
Care about the.
I care about the desk, and I care about it all, but I just wanted to make myself known, is everything, I may make myself known, beyond that, I don't, I don't, beyond this, I don't need to be involved, make the decision you make, I just wanted myself heard, I don't, I don't need to be involved, I'd rather have people that are more current in what we need and what we, and how to accomplish it.
You always start with the, the function of the room, the function of the room is the boardroom, it's a boardroom first and it's a meeting room second, so the boardroom is pretty plain, given that rectangle configuration, you're going to put the board here, and now whether it's raised or not, that's, that's why I say about the complication, you get into these debates about dais, no dais, desk, no desk, get rid of the chairs and stuff, yeah, and lighting, I agree, it's important, but you start putting all this together, I think the first step we should take is the, the major step, get the AV into the 20th century, never mind the 21st century.
Okay, but I would, I would submit to you that the AV and the lighting go together, and I think.
They do, they do.
Matt's going to be really great.
Well, we have a recommendation for lighting consultant.
I really appreciate, I know that not everybody is in the same place on this right now, but I really appreciate the conversation, because having you all kind of at least talk about it publicly is less crazy-making than the like individual side conversations about some of these things.
I mean, it really is like.
Just to bring it to a head, Matt, you're going to have to put together some documentation, I think you're going to have to talk to the powers that be that understand the technical parts, because I don't want to get involved with that. All I want to hear is when we can get a recommended operating.
Whiteboard.
No, that's, I can give up on that, too, but, but if, those are nice to haves, but if, how this is going to operate from the perspective of a dummy, who has to run and help run these meetings.
So, again, that's a different issue in terms of the operation.
Right.
The design of the technology is going to be different than the operation, again, Juniper, we should definitely, I mean, I'd love to hear what works, what doesn't work now, and who does what, because I'm, I'm new to this scenario.
Right.
And then figure out, you know, are we dealing with a simple, you know, because again, Noah's cabinet back there, by the proposal, very slick, and I was very impressed, you know, and I liked the idea of having all that technology, and also the, the desks with the two 24-inch monitors.
Oh.
Looks great, but again, I need to have a conversation with you to see if that is a reality.
But, but something has to be brought back here at some point in time, and that, my one question is, how long, I'm trying to, trying to.
We'll meet next week and then.
Okay, so next week is, what the hell, I've lost track of time, is the last week in July already?
Yeah, I mean, if Matt and Juniper could get on the same.
Maybe shoot for, maybe shoot for re-discussing this on 10th of August.
Sure. Is that a meeting?
Yep.
Yes, okay. I just was alarmed at the idea that we would have a special meeting just for this.
Audra, will you just send an email out to?
Absolutely.
And then, you know.
Does that make sense?
Audra be freed from this a little bit, I mean.
No, we should shoot.
I have watched Audra be like.
Happy to be freed from it, but.
We shouldn't, she doesn't need to.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Honestly.
But I pull everyone together.
He's like more of a counselor at this point, I'm like, I'm not a Bob, because he had an issue.
Big mouth.
How about I pull everyone together and then I don't need to be involved in the details.
That'll give you plenty of time to put that, the criteria that you've developed.
She does that, right.
Well, we can, just to summarize, Audra and everybody, by the 10th, we'll be able to come back with, well, you can be as technical as you want, but this is how we're seeing this room operate during a board meeting, and because, I'm saying that because I don't want to get involved, and I don't think this board should get involved in nitpicking decisions about whether it should be a wall-mounted or a portable screen, I, I think, you know, that's, I'm.
Well, what you consider to be nitpicking, your idea of, it all depends on what's important to you, what turns into.
You talk what you think is important.
Right, so it's not, it's like, well, town staff should decide that, because that's operational, but this is, this, you know, whatever.
I know Allison has a pretty good idea of what's worked and what hasn't, so I trust that, and, and that how it might operate, but I think the rest of the board has to understand how it's going to work, that's all.
Absolutely.
All right, onward, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Juniper, now go home.
Thank you, Juniper.
Thank you, Juniper, I'm sorry, Juniper.
Our agenda is, Juniper.
Sticking with it.
It's a light one, right, the last.
Audra, do you want to start with your report?
Yes, so I'm not going to go long, but Dave St. Laurent and Rick Seibel sort of walked all up and down Main Street, Elm Street, Chestnut, and the entrance to Mechanic to try and figure out the striping for the parking spaces.
Oh.
And what it was going to look like, and, you know, get setbacks from crosswalks and all of that.
As part of our negotiation with MDOT that's making us do this.
Yep, so, so one of the things, we're mandatory at least 10-foot on either side of each crosswalk, but in addition to that, on some of them, where the, the visibility is really, really bad, and I think an example is, you know, if you're coming, if you're heading south, going down Main Street, and you come to the five-way intersection.
Yep, yep.
That, that crosswalk that's right on the corner of sort of Mechanic and Main on the right-hand side, if you're coming down.
Which, which, what do you, what do you, what crosswalk?
Oh, sorry.
What crosswalk, you tell me, what's across Main Street or across Mechanic?
It's really, I get complaints more than any other.
We don't know which one you're talking about.
I do.
You do?
I see dog, see dog to the new child store, child clothing store.
Oh, the new Harbor Walkway crosswalk?
Yeah, yeah.
That's in a different place than it was.
Well, anyway, the visibility there, I get more complaints about that one than any other, so I'm just giving this as an example, so for something like that, where even the 10-foot setback on either side might not fix the visibility problems, we've, like, that is a perfect place to put a bike rack as well.
Yeah, there are no bike racks.
Opening up even more space, so we found, I think it was four different locations to put bike racks, so it would further improve the visibility, and we're, you know, even with that, even with the 10-foot setbacks, the bike racks, I think we're losing six spaces throughout that entire area.
That's nothing, that's nothing, I would expect it a dozen.
And we just created a bunch more with the town employees moving away.
Five.
Great, and we, I mean, bike racks are a serious lacking, that we, we.
Yeah, there's not, yeah.
MDOT, by the way, is more like 15 or 17 feet, rather than 10.
They want 20, 20 on either side.
Ash toes are just, I think, 17 or 18, but yeah, I think 10 is more than sufficient.
Oh, so it's a combination of the 10-foot setbacks, bike racks, you know, a few other things, and even with all that, I thought it was a pretty good outcome, so.
When are they going to do the striping, because the fog lines aren't in yet?
I, that's a great question. I mean, I don't want to give an exact date, because, you know, we've had so much rain and it's kept.
Well, the fog lines aren't in yet, and they're going to, MDOT's going to put in the fog lines, and we're going to put in the perpendiculars.
Yes.
Without, without the striping, and it's sort of tough to find the crosswalks, can we get some, some like temporary bullseyes that people can hold as they walk across the street to make it easier for the cars to spot them then?
We have crosswalks.
Crosswalks are in about flags and baskets on either side of them, like picking up flags, so, kind of related, the tip-down in front of French and Braun, that's altogether too steep.
Yep.
I think that the, yeah, so many, so many complaints about it, I just want to say, everyone who's complained about it is absolutely correct, it's a huge problem.
Yep.
And I think we're looking at October for MDOT to come in and fix it.
I wouldn't touch it till then.
Yeah.
It's been time, if you're in a wheelchair, you're going for a joyride.
So in the meantime, there's.
You're going to make it outside the street.
Yeah, well, there's a part of it, we've put up sort of like temporary barriers, but we want to put in like a planter, right there, so that nobody, nobody accidentally walks there.
Yeah.
It's scary, I mean, I'm really worried about somebody with impaired mobility.
Well, the elevations are screwed up, too, so it's, yeah.
Now, that's one place in our downtown master plan that has a bump out in it that I believe was excluded from this plan, because I believe it was plowing concerns from the town of Camden was the reason that the downtown master plan didn't get implemented, would that be?
I don't think there's going to be any choice, given the elevation and the need, you know, to have an ADA crosswalk and for the sidewalk to be, so you're saying, we're going to have to do it.
That.
To bump out or?
Yeah.
It's not even losing a parking spot there, it's.
No.
We're going to lose that 15-minute spot, aren't we?
Do you mind?
No, because it's on the other side.
Yeah, it's on the other side.
It's on the other side, it's on the Mechanic.
Right, it doesn't need to be a symmetrical bump out, it can be a.
Yeah, the 15-minute spot is, is heading in the right direction to see people.
Leaning bump out.
Audra, keep going.
But you can't, you can't even, you can't even have a wheelchair or scooter go down the street, they're going to go, rrrr.
Right, that's the problem, you get one, you get, even that's how you have like lawnmower flipovers, it's going to be the same, but, yeah, we're joking, but it's not fun.
Six in October.
And I think that's my only sort of.
All right, select board reports, Matt.
French and Braun was the big one, lots of complaints about that one, and then.
I just, I just have some questions, I just, some quick updates, how's the tubing hill, is that going to be ready in?
I, I sure do hope so, so we needed to get a engineering, sorry, like a, the berm, we needed like a drawing to be able to give to our people to, to get it done, so I'll check on the status of that and let you know.
Cool, okay, Siemens, work, are they, how have they done with the public safety building? I haven't heard any discussion, we've talked about delivery.
They're all done with that.
Oh, good, so the air conditioning, everything is, they have.
Close to completion.
With the, with the heat pumps in there?
Everything.
Yeah, oh, yeah, everything is almost done.
Oh, great, okay.
The wells are drilled.
Capt.
Capt, systems in.
LED streetlights, everything going well there, any updates? LED streetlights, everything going well there? Any updates?
Um, there, that is.
Pretty good.
And that is ongoing.
Problem.
Ongoing, no, I wouldn't, I don't want to use the word problem.
Yeah, that's.
Ongoing, sort of.
It's a roll, it's on a rolling basis.
There's wiring problems.
There are wiring problems. And there have been some nodes with our system that have had to be replaced and a few other things, so.
Sort of curious.
Ever village.
Two more. How was our first responder, EMT, stuff going with fire department, police department? Where are we with that status, those people?
So, that's very much something that the new town manager, Rockport, and I have to get together and meet on it and sort of plan out some things.
Cool. And last thing, you got the email that, you know, a bunch of people coming after me to make sure we have an EMS for-town meeting.
Yep.
Yes.
And Doug is his name, new town manager, or John?
John.
John Duke.
He replied to me and said that he would be in touch with you and figure it all out.
Oh, you just reminded me of the other thing I was going to tell all of you. The town of Lincolnville reached out to me again about having a meeting about the lake dams.
The what?
The lake, the dams on the lake, East and West Dam.
Oh, yeah, they're still there.
Come to the library meeting.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you. We'll, we'll put it on, put it on our agenda for discussion for our future agendas. Anything else, Marco?
No, I just wanted to know what, I know people are always interested in those things.